Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting of the Monroe County Council to order for Tuesday, September 26th. I would like to note for the record that all seven members of county council are here in person in the Net U Hill Room.
Welcome back, Cheryl.
Really nice. Really nice. So, it'll be great. We're going to move to the adoption of the agenda. We have a very lengthy agenda this evening, and we will be having a recess at some point here. I will aim for 7:30 for a brief recess, just because I know we're going to be slogging through a lot of things. But other than that, are there any suggestions for an addition or deletion from tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to public comment. And this item is public comment for items that are not on the agenda for this evening. And we do typically have a time limit of three minutes per speaker. Do we have any members of the public wishing to make comments? And if so, feel free to come on up. If you're online, please raise your hand, and then I will probably need someone to tell me, because could I be promoted to the higher level on Zoom, please? Thank you. Okay, I do not see any hands raised. So we will continue with the next agenda item, which is departmental updates. Do we have any departments? Oh, hi, welcome.
I'll try to be brief, because I talked to Pete earlier and said your agenda is going to keep you into the darkness hours here, so.
It always does that after budget time, we try to get a lot.
I don't want to contribute to that, so this may be a little bit unusual, but I was talking to the sheriff, and we felt compelled to come to this meeting and just provide a little information we felt was necessary to the council. A lot of times, we, and I say "we" in our field, are pretty quick to talk about things that aren't going right and get caught up in how government operations work, and sometimes they're not the most efficient, and I think we can all agree to that. But we rarely, when things do go smoothly, and when things do go right, and when collaboration works, sometimes we're not real vocal about that. So, we don't want to fall prey to that. So I wanted to come in and talk to a couple of things. First off, we had our budget meetings on September 12th before this body. And I'll be honest with you, we didn't skip over here with joy and delight in our heart about coming to a budget meetings and the budget hearings, a little bit of apprehension. But I think we commented on this after we got done, but that budget hearing, there were a lot of good questions asked by this body of what we were trying to do, what we were doing, what we hoped to do. There was a lot of discussion about what we needed to do that, and there was some discussion about what we can give and what we could take. But it was a very civil, it was a process that was very smooth. It was a process that you could tell that each party involved in this was truly concerned about doing the right thing there. And when we got through that budget hearing, I told the sheriff, I've been doing this for a while, and that was one of the few budget hearings I've been to, meetings I've been to, that I felt that all parts of that were truly heard, and we came out on the end of that with a real good understanding of what you folks were looking for, what we were looking for, and we were able to meet in the middle, and I think that, and make that work for all of us. So I just wanted to say thank you for that, on behalf of myself and the sheriff. The second part was, is that I know that, I heard this rumor about, oh, I don't know, three weeks ago, about this eight and a half percent pay raise, and I'm like, okay, it's another rumor. And lo and behold, yesterday, this thing comes to fruition. And I just wanted to come to say, on behalf of the sheriff's office and all of our employees there, that that's some pretty quick work, that, and I know as we came through those budget hearings, that was discussed, if we can get the budgets to working and turn that down, that was your goal. And I just wanted to say thank you for that, too, because that's going to have a really, really big impact on our ability to attract, and not only attract, but retain quality people that we can provide the services, both in that jail and on the merit side. And without that, it's very, very, very difficult to do that. So those two things, I think, are just worthy of us coming and saying thank you. And I've got to say that as we've come along here with the council and the commissioners, as we've tried to get things done, that collaboration between those three parties has really came to see, if you've watched our Facebook account, we just posted some other things there. Those are the fruits of those labors from the council, the commissioners, and the sheriff's office, and it's not one of us doing it, it's all of us working in concert. So I guess I wanted to say that government can work, and this is an example of how it has worked, at least from our perspective. So I just wanted to come and say thank you. That's all.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
It's nice to hear. Appreciate you taking the time.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Do we have any other departments who would like, oh, okay, we have a commissioner to make an update.
Good evening. It's strange to be on this side of the desk, you know. I wanted to give you an update on the two recent community conversations that the Board of Commissioners held to discuss the possible site for a new jail and the justice complex. But before I begin, I want to thank Katz for filming last Wednesday. I want to thank everyone that came out on Sunday, the sheriff, the chief deputy, most of the county council, Isabel P. Mont Smith, Sue Scambolieri, and especially the residents who came out. It was an open discussion, I felt like, with a lot of good feedback. So the purpose of those meetings, you know, was to discuss the possibility of building a new jail at the Thompson site, which sits near Osage Place, the RCA Park, Summit Elementary School, and the entrance to Switch Yard Park. Across both of those sessions, almost no one spoke in favor of building a jail on a jail campus on the Thompson property. People were concerned about possible light pollution, traffic, impact on their property values, noise, and the potential for previously incarcerated individuals to be in their neighborhoods, parks, and at the school. The biggest worry of all was for the safety of children in the area, especially those who use the RCA Park and who attend Summit Elementary. Questions were even raised about possible lockdowns should an inmate escape from the jail. People wanted to know what other sites were considered and why those sites were no longer at the top of the list. We were questioned about the need for a new jail, why a single-story jail is needed, and other items. Residents asked about other uses of the Thompson property, including its use for affordable housing. And as most of you know, prior to these discussions, the commissioners had been in favor of using Thompson possibly for affordable housing. So one of the biggest takeaways I had from Sunday's meeting was that local residents, who are all residents of the city of Bloomington, I think it's important to point out, would rather see the new jail campus built at either the old hospital site, which is currently being referred to as Hopewell, or the property we previously considered on Fullerton Pike. As you know, Fullerton Pike property is not zoned for jail, and last year, the Bloomington City Council denied our request to rezone that property. We were also asked about renovating the current justice building, but as you all know, again, the current jail cannot ensure the consistent and sustainable provision of the constitutional rights of incarcerated persons. We are bringing in an engineering firm to tell us if this current structure can be renovated in a way that would allow it to serve as a jail for several more decades, which is what I would assume we would want, and what the estimated cost would be. If we go this route, we will also need to develop estimates for what it would cost to transport and house inmates during such a renovation, along with the cost to rent space for the operation of our courts. If a renovation were to occur, it would probably be a multi-year project, and Sheriff Marte has indicated he is not in favor of renovating the current jail, which you all know also. So in addition to my report on these community conversations, I'd like to take an opportunity just to share some thoughts with the general public as it relates to this. First, we need residents to understand the roles and responsibilities of everybody, and that you are the fiscal body, we oversee buildings, the sheriff oversees programming within the jail. But nothing in our responsibility allows the county to do something like expunge a person's court records. That's up to the courts to take care of, period. And that's one of the things that I think has been raised at different things. So we need to clearly define for the public what our roles are. Another issue I wanted to bring out is when to co-locate the court's probation in both the prosecutors' and public defender's offices. Having the courts co-located with the jail lowers the need, of course, for jail staff to transport inmates to and from jail, along with reducing the risk of inmates attempting to escape. I agree with Counselor Crossley and with Sheriff Marte that we should immediately co-locate those other services with the jail. If not, we must consider not only the cost of staff and vehicles to transport inmates, but there is also the cost to renovate the bottom floor of the current facility so that it can serve as a holding area when inmates are called for their court dates. Such renovation would need to be done while that part of the current justice building is being used for the sheriff's offices and the intake and release of individuals. Of course, this has the potential to be a logistical nightmare for everybody concerned. Yes, building everything at once will increase the initial cost, but there are also cost savings in building everything at once, and would allow us to consider other uses of the buildings that we currently use downtown, including the possibility of selling one or more of them to help offset that initial cost. And finally, as a member of the Board of Commissioners, I feel it is time to ask the county council how much they are willing to spend on a new jail and justice complex. Keep in mind that I fully support treatment and other programming to keep people out of the system, but we need to figure out what that's going to be. And back of the napkin estimates are that with a new jail, or new jail tax, rather, we could bond for up to $200 million. So we need to know soon how much the county council is willing to allocate so that wherever that new jail and justice complex are located, we can start serious planning. And of course, part of that would be whether or not we initially co-locate everything as well. So as Chief Deputy Parker indicated, we are looking forward to working with all of you, the sheriff, and members of our community to come to decisions on these very important topics that are going to impact our community for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the commissioner? Go right ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay, it's not so much, maybe it's a question in here, but it is a comment, because I do appreciate the conversation that we had, it was August 24th, when we had the joint commissioner and council conversation in regards to the proposed sites, and we hear a lot of opinions of those sites. I want to point out there that I felt like it was important for us to make sure that we went to people where they were, because we heard lots of public comment continue to say that it was hard for them to come here, to find parking, to find childcare, whatever the case is. So I'm actually thankful that we were able to go to people where they are, because as public servants, that's very near and dear. Another comment slash question is, a lot of the conversations that I got and constituent emails were the idea of Hopewell, because that seemed to be the big buzz of what was coming up. And I don't know if you would be able to speak to this, but I guess my recollection was the conversation of Hopewell maybe started, like, we started asking the city, like, earlier this year, when there were, well, from what I assume and what I read, is the conversations of Hopewell having already a point in place. So I guess in my mind, maybe it felt like we were going to the city, asking them when it was already, like, when they've had blueprints and things like that. But there seems to be a discrepancy of is Hopewell available, why isn't Hopewell available? Because I do feel, and I'll say this, I do feel like in listening to some of the public comment, I do feel like our city colleagues kind of didn't, they got the short end of the stick in some of the conversations. And I just want to make sure that we are being in true government fashion, if we truly believe this, that we have to be open, honest, and transparent with a lot of conversations. And I guess I'm hearing a little conflicting things, and I guess my question would be, can we clarify for the public, when was the actual conversation of Hopewell happening? And how did we get to the point where Thompson is the site that we are looking at?
Well, I had, I would have to go back to my notes and see when I first raised this with the mayor, but it was certainly before, long before Commissioner Thomas went to a work group of the city council. It was many months ago, for sure, in terms of private conversation with the mayor on that. As you know, we had considered a site that was south of the Monroe Hospital. Our design group, DLZ, has said they don't think that that gives us the kind of space that we need for, to co-locate, okay? So it would give us what we would need if we just had the footprint of a jail, but I think we all understand that having a jail that far away from others, the courts especially, can lead to all kinds of problems. So that if we are looking long-term to co-locate, or short-term, which was my preference, that that was not a location that they thought was going to suit our needs. The original Fullerton Pike one would, Hopewell would mostly, and then the Thompson site. Now, we're still not sure, and we did say this repeatedly, both last Wednesday and on Sunday, that because we're looking for the geotechnical and environmental assessments to come through, that we don't know if the Thompson site will even fit our needs. And as we discussed the contract to go ahead and do those things, we indicated that this would let us know if it's not appropriate for a jail or, you know, correctional campus, that perhaps it would give us ideas of what other things could be built there. We know that there were tests for quarries there, we know that there are karst features there, we know there are slopes, we don't know if those slopes are natural or, you know, man-made sort of thing. So we're waiting for those. Hopefully, we'll have those within, before the end of October, as we told people last, at these meetings, we will post those reports for people and try to share them, and of course, try to push them out in different ways so that they are shared with the public, they're not going to be secret. So we still don't know, but we feel like we have looked at multiple other things. We've got this idea that we need space to co-locate everything. And I should say for the public, too, last winter, after the city council shut down our request to rezone the Fullerton Pike location, that multiple property owners came to us and said, would you consider this place, this place? Well, Smithville is rather far out, and that puts, you know, extra burdens on transportation and the time it takes to transport people. The same way with several other places that local property owners came to us with, many of them were too small. So we did look at more than even four locations, but we tried to narrow it down so that we could start to move forward with things.
I just wanted to clarify, because it seemed that the, one of the main things that you were saying or asking is you would like to know how much we are willing to spend. And you referenced 200 million, and I think what you said was that was with the corrections tax being implemented. So that would be if we enacted another tax, and this would be an income tax, then we could spend that much. But we have already made an effort to not spend the existing increased lit local income tax so that we have money to do this. So I guess, are you suggesting that we raise taxes for this?
I'm not suggesting, that's all, you're bailiwick. I'm saying that we need to come up with, what are we, what do we want to do all at once, which helps us figure out how much money we're going to need to make that possible. I don't think we need to spend 200 million. I honestly don't, but.
Okay, all right, that's good to know.
But I think that we need to start to have those conversations. So I gave a shock number, I know that.
Got it.
But I think it's time that we start to think about those things.
Well, this conversation has gotten off to a start. Okay.
I don't mean to hijack your meeting, because I know you've got a long agenda, so.
Yeah, we do have a lot. I think, I think we'll put this on the agenda to talk about it in the near future, because...
Excellent.
I've been under the impression that we needed more information in order to know how much money we needed to spend, because it's the programming and the facility that's going to drive what we spend, not just what we feel comfortable imposing, so.
Right, but I think the bigger driver is whether or not we're going to co-locate everything at once, and whether or not we have to buy additional property.
Yeah, those are both factors. Yeah, Counselor Deckard.
Sorry, I don't want to belabor a discussion that we could probably do it more properly later, but I will say this, I have not made this comment in this meeting, and I did not on Sunday at the meeting. I have a child that goes to some elementary, I live in that neighborhood. I would not for a second consider that as an option if I did not think that was something I could subject my family and others to. And so I just want to say to the people in that neighborhood, we would not look at that if we did not think that was a safe option.
Yeah.
And I've lived there in that neighborhood for about 16 years, to be clear, and I've heard over the years, all the additional things that would come into that neighborhood that would cause it harm. And the irony is, is that now, I hear some of the things that have come into the neighborhood that had been originally described as causing harm, now this will cause us harm, and that neighborhood's always changing and growing. One of the things that I would note is, I think the Hopewell site is probably off-limits, because we're going to have the exact same issue there. The existing site, we're not going to hear from the near west-side neighbors, nor the children or parents of Fairview, because they've lived under that for all their lives. But if we were to think exhaustively, as Commissioner Giddens is saying, here's my recommendation that I think that commissioners and council could approach, and commissioners, we would have to take your cue from you on this. We may have to think really outside the box before we move towards a corrections tax, which gives me heartburn like you would not believe. I don't even know how I'd get to that, but I'm not going to rule anything out. We might have to think exhaustively about things like the courthouse and the Department of Health returning to support the courts, much as they once supported the courts or the post office. And we might have to put things like the commissioners and council, assessor, auditor, treasurer, recorder, surveyor, they may have to go to a site that is more amenable to the neighborhoods and the public. And if we own an area in the Thompson property, maybe the Board of Health goes there. But I would say, before we get to things like a correction tax, and I'm not saying that we're getting there, but $200 million is a lot of money for a lot of property we either already have and buildings we already have. Before we get to that, I think we need to think outside the box. There's no reason the county council needs to have its office necessarily in the courthouse. Now, that granted, I recognize the courthouse is probably postage stamp on the needs, but that said, it has been a solution in the last 40 years, a couple different ways and times, and once we wanted to raise it, and we moved back from that, and we need to honor that. But I think we have a lot of campus, we have a lot of old buildings, I think of the public defender's office and the Curry Building, perhaps that needs to be revisited. And we have to be the most artful that we can. I will say this, we will never please everyone on the location. We will never do that. But if you went back in time, I'm sure that was the case back in the day. So just a couple of comments here.
I think Sue Scambolieri of the city council said it very well, when she said, we'll never get perfect, but we're going for optimal. So, yeah. Thank you all for your time, I appreciate that.
Counselor Munson.
Oh, you got some more? Okay, go.
I wanted to give just a real quick list, where, your mic's... I wanted to give just a real quick list of what occurred to me in thinking about what might the council come up with in terms of costs. So we need to consider cost of purchasing the property with room for co-location of associated justice and treatment facilities, cost of necessary infrastructure to operate a jail, cost of transport to courts, if that's necessary, cost of public transportation, cost to the county, for locations that are to be visited by employees and visitors of the jail and associated facilities, cost of environmental mitigation at the jail and facilities property, cost of amenities for social and cultural mitigation, cost of the facility itself. This is not a finite list, we'll keep adding to it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes, okay, so, yes, I was around when that property was purchased, and I was not in favor of purchasing that property. First of all, I was not in favor of a juvenile lockup facility, number one. And number two, as far as I know, it never did stone borings, and one of the commissioners went to the city and said, oh, if you let us do this, we'll take infrastructure all the way across the 80 acres and right there. I'm thinking, people have no idea what they're talking about to make such a statement. However, there were only two of us that voted against it, and so that went through, and everybody celebrated, oh, we're getting this, we're moving forward. And how many years ago, I think we could look at that, how many years ago was that?
2002, 2002 is when it was purchased, I think.
What year?
2002, I believe.
Okay, so I'm just saying, when that was being discussed to purchase in other areas, we can just expect the whole neighborhood to come out and say, we don't like this idea. So don't think that that was just that particular area, you're going to find that wherever you determine to put it. So you need to really put your best foot forward when you're trying to get something done for the county, simply because anybody that's moved there since that property was purchased for a justice campus has known that the county bought it for a justice campus. This is not a surprise. Now, I'm not saying I'm in favor of that spot, was in favor of buying it, but I am saying that we need to be truthful when we're talking to the public, and then present ways that we can make it more powerful to those people surrounding it. I'm just suggesting that is a better way to work with the neighborhood, rather than walk in and say, well, we haven't made up our mind, and make them think, we don't have to do that, because if that's the attitude, we could say that any place we decided to go.
Well, and I did point out at both sessions that the property originally was purchased in 2002 for a juvenile detention facility. And that actually was a good decision not to build that, because we are not really sending juveniles into detention. There was, I think, one that was there in, did Judge Harvey, I think, told me in August? Right now, we have zero juveniles from Monroe County that have been sent to detention, which I think is something to applaud everybody on as well.
I would also like to add that one of the reasons why it didn't move forward was Right, I, I would also like to add that one of the reasons why it didn't move forward was everybody started, what's happened this time as well, this big laundry list of, oh, how nice it would be if we did X, Y, and Z. And then the price of doing it was beyond what the public would have anything to do with. So we have to be reasonable, respectful of the people we're asking to pay for this project.
Yes.
I'll get off my rant.
No, thank you. Um, I think, looks like that's a really.
Okay, thank you for the time. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Um, are there any other departments who would like to provide an update to us this evening? Okay. That will check. No hands, okay. Um, then we are at council liaison updates. So does, do any council members have anything from their liaised departments or offices that they'd like to share? Counselor Crossley.
I just want to say really quickly, I was like an intern slash shadow of the day of the Public Defender's Office. Um, and it was great to spend the entire day with them. Um, and walk back and forth between their office, probation office, court. And I think we did it like several different times throughout the day. And it gave me a lot of food for thought for a lot of things and related to the previous conversation that we had, especially in terms of co-locating. But I just wanted to say thank you for having me in your office, um, Public Defenders. And, um, it was fun and I would do it again.
Great. Any other, um, Counselor Munson?
I want to report that I have information from the probation office, uh, thanks to, uh, Judge DeKoff as well, about probation officers' co-lear rates. And this is information, uh, comparative information from around the state. And when we get to that point of the discussion, I'm very happy to share that with all of you.
Oh, great, thanks.
And I'm sorry it's so late, but better than never.
Yes, that's, that's going to be a theme tonight, I think. Counselor Hawk.
Uh, yes, as many of you know, I was supposed to be at French Lick at the Indiana County Council Association meeting today, which I regretfully, uh, missed because I didn't want to miss this evening's meeting. Sometimes you have to put what you actually have to do ahead of what you really would like to do. But I did speak with Assessor, uh, Sharp, who's been there every day and of course, she's not spending the night. She's watching our dollars. Thank you, Assessor Sharp. She's not spending the night. She's driving up there every day and driving back home. So that she's not spending the night spending our dollars. And I think we need to recognize that because we are within wa, uh, drive, walking, driving distance. Uh, so that's number one. But part of the conversation that we had, uh, today was that many of the other counties that she had discussion with was talking about how much more money that they had to provide raises for their people. So I think it's got to be tied to the income tax because all the counties are feeling like there's additional dollars available. So that's the reason why I think it's so important that we have that three, five-year fiscal outlook to see where we're going to be in three years, five years from now before we make a final decision. But that did give me some hope that, well, we're not the only ones able to do this. So it has to be tied to that, or it could also be tied to, uh, the council's ability now to put in that tax to cover some of your court expenses. I'm not saying I'm in favor of that. You know, I hate new taxes. But some of the counties might have done that. Or they might have put in places commu, that corrections tax that we put in. So whatever the reasons, and I would have liked to have been there to say, and how did you do it? Learn from them. Uh, but that, I wanted to share that because I think that's uplifting news for us and for our county.
Thank you. Any other, uh, updates? All right, thanks. Let's go ahead and move to, uh, the meat of the agenda with, um, item number six from our legal department.
Counsel, I moved approved resolution 2023 dash 24B, part two, approval of tax abatement for Phoenix closures.
Second.
And I learned something, um, from the materials that.
Yeah, I, I was just going to mention that there is a typo on the actual resolution. It should reference part one resolution of 2023 24A. Sorry, I missed that typographical error.
Okay, got it.
And, uh, there are representatives from the company here, as well as I believe Stacy Ganon's online. And, uh, I believe, uh, Kim Shell has the, their PowerPoint presentation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'm just going to briefly go through. We had a, a meeting, uh, at the, at the August work session. We had the preliminary 2023 24A, uh, discussed and approved by this body. I just recommend, or, uh, refresher memory that, that included a discussion that this site is the old Otis manufacturing plant, that this group had had, has utilized a tax abatement before and was pretty much, uh, there was a delay in their implementation of their initial ones due to COVID. And so this, they were almost to the level that was, uh, requested in that, or was discussed in that original one. I believe it was, they had 69 and seven, no, they had 71 instead of 73 employees, uh, which with their late implementation, I, I thought was kind of impressive. Uh, this did go through the Economic Development Commission who unanimously recommended approval of this. I think we've gone through a lot of it, but I just would remind you and the public that this is, uh, includes a 21 additional employees with a total salary for those 21s of 1.1 million dollars. Um, if you have any questions for me about the process, I'm more than happy to answer them. If not, I would turn this over to, uh, the BDC and the, and the, the company to make their presentation.
Okay, are there questions? Go right ahead.
And I don't know if Katz, if Stacy Ganon's online, if you could, uh, make it so that she could, uh, speak, that would be great.
Welcome, everyone. It's good to see you.
Hello.
I'm looking online, I don't.
Yeah, if we could get the PowerPoint.
Ah, yeah, there she is. Hi, Ms. Ganon.
Hello, good evening.
All right. Are you able to switch the, the view so we're looking at the? While she's doing that, would you all mind just introducing yourselves for the public, um, stating your names?
I'm Bill Benton, plant manager of Phoenix closures.
I'm Jen Pearl, I'm president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation.
And I am Clark Greiner, uh, Business Development Director for the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation.
Thank you.
And I'm, oh, sorry.
No, go right ahead.
I was just, I'm Stacy Ganon, I'm the CFO with Phoenix closures.
Thanks for joining us. Um, oh, it looks like we have things ready. Is that the first slide? Okay, great.
This is our story. Phoenix is a world leader in packaging innovation. This is our sixth generation family-owned business that's been supplied with clients, closures, and packaging since the 1890s. Our products and processes have continuously progressed year after year and decade after decade. 50 patents and billions of packages later, we stay ahead of the industry changes and challenges and continue to be the future-focused. Our mission and vision is to be a growing, world-class, well-managed, relevant, privately-held packaging provider. Our mission is to delight our customers and provide value to our stakeholders. Our current status is eight active production cells, currently 68 to actually 71 now. Uh, full-time permanent positions. Positions are paid at premium rates with above-standard benefits. And current annual wages are 3.9 million. Proposed future vision, additional four production cells, 21 additional full-time permanent positions to be hired, and there's positions and annual wages. This is our facility of the 450,000 feet, uh, square feet building that we've now, uh, took about 160,000 square feet of, um, 23.1 acres where it sits on and was built in 1971. This is currently what we've renovated so far, our front office and our warehousing space. And again, this is our production area. We have the eight bays and continue to grow into the four, which will contain 12, uh, full-time bays and production area. And that's all.
Thank you.
And?
Um, sorry.
Go right ahead.
Um, I was just going to point out too, some of the, the things I would like to add is just our commitment to our, um, environmental footprint. Um, we are committed to reducing our energy intensity by 25% uh, by 2031. Um, we were successfully awarded the Equovatus Bronze Medal, uh, this year. And we are continuing to, uh, develop that program, um, to hopefully get us, uh, you know, even like the silver or gold ratings. Um, we now offer post-consumer resin plastics, um, which has a lower carbon footprint. And all of our caps are designed to be recycled. Um, so, in addition to that, we, um, promote involvement in the community. And we do this in several ways. Uh, first, we give each, uh, plant facility a discretionary amount of money to donate and involve themselves in charities of their choices in the community. We do a company match for employees to, um, donate to charities. And then we also give eight hours of PTO per year per employee, uh, to go out and get involved in their community.
Great, thank you. Um, are there any questions from Counsel, Counselor McKim?
Thank you very much. Thank you for, uh, for coming here today and, uh, for bringing this, uh, to us, uh, for, hopefully for approval. Uh, I just wanted to confirm a couple of the basic numbers from the paperwork. So, 15 million dollar investment, is that in, in personal property and, and manufacturing and equipment? Is that about right? And, uh, 21 new, new jobs above the, shows 68 bits that you said you had already, uh, actually created a couple of new positions, okay? And then a standard kind of st, 10-year stepped abatement, the, the usual schedule for a, for a 10-year abatement?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Um, has anybody done the calculations that show the approximate amount of tax, of new tax that will be collected, uh, from this investment over the 10-year period?
Yeah, I, I, I've done that. So, um, if you, if, and it should be in your package. Um, but if you look at this, there would be a, a net tax abatement savings back to the company of approximately 465,000 dollars. Uh, there'd be a total tax, uh, bill collected from, over that 10-year period, um, accounting for 312,000 dollars over that period.
Thank you.
Counselor Deckard.
This is the old Otis facility, is that correct? Awesome. I sometimes think I know things and then I get turned around like everybody else. I just want to say that, um, I believe this is your second visit with us, right? And I appreciate that. I also appreciate the notion that this is a former site that is now seeing life again, which is not always the case in Indiana. And I also want to compliment the folks at the BDC, they got to hear this a few minutes ago, but I'll say it here for the public. At your recent annual meeting, uh, both of your comments, Ms. Pearl, I'm thinking specifically some of the remarks you made about how industry has changed in this community and the need to diversify our workforce beyond, it's a college town or what used to be an RCA town or a showers brothers town. That was some of the most on-point description of a problem I've seen for a long time in that we're not looking for folks like this who come in and reuse these facilities. And so I just want to applaud the BDC for being here, for looking at this, and we have to think like that. Uh, because we don't know what 20 years from now will be like, but if past is prologue, and I sure hope it's not, we're going to go through some event again that changes or alters us, just like we did with RCA, showers, and our friends at Otis, which we treasure, but they're not all here anymore. So, I appreciate that. I get this message and I appreciate what you had to say at your annual meeting.
Counselor Iverson.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Bennett, thank, welcome and, uh, again for coming here. And, uh, Ms. Garvin, again, and excuse me, thank you for, uh, joining us tonight. Uh, again, I, I made, uh, a similar comment the last time you were here, but I, I do think it's, it's vitally important to point out, this is a Brownfield reclamation. Uh, this is, uh, an important way that our community can bounce back from, uh, ways that we have treated the land in the past. And I think that's really important, especially, uh, Ms. Ganon, as you mentioned, your ambitious environmental goals and corporate responsibility goals. Uh, I think that's, this is exactly, uh, the type of culture that we have here in Monroe County. And I think, uh, this is just going to be a, a great way for you all to fit into what we have here already. I also want to point out that one of the fringe benefits mentioned in the packet was tuition reimbursement. I know that's a, uh, something that's, it's really kind of trending these days, but that's a, that's really a goal of, of this community is to take those graduates from Indiana University and make sure they stay here. And that's a great way to do that. That really stood out to me as, as a great, uh, uh, reason to, to approve this. And, and the last thing I'll mention that makes me really excited about this is the work that, that Clark Greiner has done on this project. Uh, you know, we've heard a lot about, um, economic development in this community. We've seen a lot of, uh, businesses wanting to locate here. We've seen a lot of folks, uh, looking at this community. And this is the value of having the BDC work closely with Monroe County. Uh, there are folks that have questioned what exactly is the definition of economic development. And I will tell you, it is right here staring us in the face. 21 new jobs. These are well-paid jobs. These are, uh, really solid, solid, uh, company, uh, locating here in Monroe County. So, look no further, economic development. This is exactly what it is. I'm done.
It's fun to listen to you talk sometimes.
I just, you know, it just, it's really clear to me.
You're enthusiastic and it, it shows. Um, any other comments or questions for our guests? All right, well, I also appreciate, um, the amount of work that it takes to bring this forward and, um, the attention to, um, the questions that I had about your environmental goals. And, um, I duly noted that you, um, took that to heart in explaining how you're doing and how you're approaching those things. Um, and I appreciate that. So I won't go, I won't belabor it, but if we do not have any more questions, um, I'll ask for public comments.
May I make public comment?
You can make public comment.
Um, so we, one on behalf of the BDC, we just wanted to thank you for considering this this evening. Um, and, you know, just for the public's benefit of how we work with companies, um, that are amazing companies like Phoenix, is we help them, um, navigate local government processes, uh, like the one we're going through here and connect to other resources that help them to invest and grow jobs more quickly in the community. Um, and so we've been delighted to partner with county on that as well and appreciate your support. Um, the investment that we're talking about here provides several benefits to the Monroe County community that we wanted to highlight. Um, so it not only grows quality jobs, but it helps to retain the existing workforce, uh, as well as upscaling the local workers. Um, new employees can earn between 22 to 26 an hour, um, not including benefits, um, which are an additional, I believe it's 16 an hour. Um, increases in wages support local income tax revenue and consumer spending in the local economy. Um, the company has really infused. tax revenue and consumer spending in the local economy. Um, the company has really infused a high-end innovation in robotics in this plant. We took a tour about a month ago, and we've been working with you all for some time, but it's not until you really see it in person where you realize just how high-tech it is and how automated it is, and we were blown away. Uh, we also got to see the old, like, Otis side of the plant, and it is night and day. What Phoenix has done with this facility, it is gorgeous. We were sitting there going, who's your architect? This is amazing. Um, so that also, I know there was some photos shared here. It's, they've done an amazing job with that. Um, beyond jobs and innovation, um, capital expenditures, like the planned fifteen million dollar investment, also help keep property taxes lower across Monroe County by raising the overall net assessed value. Um, that is something that Jeff McKim helped us to understand how that calculation works, um, because tax rates are the overall tax levy divided by the assessed value. Uh, and raising assessed values through investments like these lowers the rate. Um, so thank you for that. Um, and overall... Thank you, Professor McKim. Um, I, I actually mean that.
We laugh because we've all had that lesson from that. You know, it's like, it's county council one-on-one.
So thank you for that. Um, and then just, you know, the, um, investment that Phoenix has shown in the community, uh, that has already been discussed, and their track record of progress towards their, um, previous commitments. Um, we're just very delighted to be able to talk about this project and support an employer like this here.
Thank you.
And then I'd like to make some comments, too. Um, my name is Clark Greiner. Um, I'd just like to start out by saying thank you for your kind words and taking an opportunity to really look at this op, uh, this, this opportunity here. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Ms. Gannon, as well as Mr. Benton and Mr. Krantz, who were so instrumental in, uh, the facilitation of the Otis hel- elevator building getting redone, and, uh, it is, to Jen's comments, a, a stunning, stunning facility out there. I would encourage you, if you get a chance, to go out there and see that. Um, it's certainly state-of-the-art. I would consider it world-class. If you look at the products that they manufacture, every one of us in this room has probably used them, and based on the products that they make, uh, it will doubtfully ever be, uh, obsolete. Um, so I think that's an awesome thing that they've got going there. Um, the other thing is, I think, as Stacy pointed out, uh, it's a, they're great corporate citizens, continue within our community. This is exactly the type of businesses that we wanna attract. If you go inside, what you're gonna see is a state-of-the-art facility with robotics, automation, and just state-of-the-art manufacturing, and it's something that exactly that we wanna see. It's bright, it's, it's, um, vibrant, there's a, just a nice vibe to this operation. And not only that, but the, uh, facilities that their employees get to use, uh, on a day-to-day basis are outstanding, so they're impeccable. Uh, and I would encourage you, this, I, I cannot say enough good things. I've been to a lot of manufacturing plants, and this is really, uh, a stellar one, so hats off to the, uh, uh, the Phoenix closure team and staff for having the vision and the ability to do that. And then the other side of it, and this is where the BEDC continues to put a little pressure on them, is we've got more space there. So, we, we'd like to look for more cells and everything in the future, so we're gonna continue to talk about that, but thank you for your time. We certainly hope for a favorable recommendation support on this.
Thank you. Is there, um, other public comment? Okay, we're gonna, can you maybe share a microphone?
The Tonight Show.
All right.
Good, uh, evening, Madam Chair. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I wanna say, uh, thank you for, to the BEDC, Ms. Pearl, Mr. Greiner, for their leadership on this. Um, we endorse and support this, the resolution before you. I think, uh, Councilmember Iverson said it, this is economic development. Um, the terms are very reasonable. Uh, Councilmember McKim brought that up, the ten-year abatement. This is a solid investment in something that is high-tech, that sort of reuses the brownfields that we've talked about. Uh, Phoenix Closure is a, uh, a community-minded entity with, uh, environmental concerns, good pay, and sort of giving back, and these are the type of industries, the type of entities we wanna support here, uh, in Monroe County. So, I thank you for your time tonight, and appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, uh, could we, could I?
Oh, of course. Could I, it's not a public comment, but I just wanted, I'm hearing all this about, uh, the growth in assessed value, and we really appreciate that. But the other part that we, you might have heard us mention earlier today, was the growth in our income tax. And so, when you employ, uh, folks here, if they live here in this county, that income tax stays here and helps support government services as well, and we all need that, so we appreciate that very much. And I wanted to make sure you understood how important that is to us.
Thanks. Could we go ahead and have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Um, let's move on then to item six B, and that is a presentation from Angie Purdy, our Commissioner's Administrator, on the status of prior bond projects. Thank you for coming and sharing this information with us. I appreciate it.
Hi there. Oh, you're most welcome. I hope that what I have is what you're looking for. Um, so we'll just kind of, I think what we should do is, I'll start back with the twenty, I actually have the twenty-fifteen bond, um, which has, we had a number of, you want me to, what would you like from me? You're looking at me with a question.
I'm trying to get it out of our packet.
Yeah.
Um, I can, I can do however you wanna do it. So you tell me what, where you wanna start.
Can it be displayed on the screen?
That would be great.
Just give me a moment.
Okay, sure.
Is it in the packet, did you say?
I am not seeing it in the packet. I think it came af-
It was sent in an email by, by Courtney.
Okay.
We had a lot of additions.
It was sent on the twenty-second.
Thank you. Give us just a second here.
Sure.
There we go.
He's gonna wait. He's on Phoenix.
It was sent to us on the twenty-second. This is all old stuff. I don't-
Yeah, this is just the old, the older bonds.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
Which actually, what, what is, what is the goal of the presentation? What are we, what are we trying to learn from this?
So, I asked her to do it.
And, and I think we were trying to identify which, which, uh, bond funds had, uh, completed projects or nearly completed projects, and how much, uh, money was left in them that might be used for, uh, to help us meet our budget obligations for other projects. So we wanna go shopping in your leftovers.
I don't think you're gonna get to, but I'd be happy to talk about that. I do have, um, I do think that we have money for a couple of items. Um, I do, and we can do that one at a time as we go through. It might be easier.
Yeah, okay, if you would guide us through that, that'd be great.
Do you want to, where do you want me to start?
So, I also wanna preface this by saying that we talked about this way before this annual budget.
Totally.
And, and so, yes, we are looking for that pot of gold that we know is hiding in here somewhere.
Yes.
Clearly. Um, but, but I think also, um, you know, it was news to some of us, the naive section of council over here, that, that there would be these funds that, that hang out and, um, over a longer period of time. So, it was really, I think, the intent, from my perspective, is to allow us to have a better understanding of where are the bond money, um, goes, in terms of, yes, we approve it, and then, you know, I at least have not kept up on, on what, how the projects are going. So there's that sort of tracking, and, um, and also to see, um, a little bit about the budgeting part. You look like you have something to say, Mr. Deckard.
I, I apologize. I was just gonna say, I think, I think it's the council's duty to come back to bonds, which we've authorized, and try to figure out if there's, projects are still ongoing to ask those questions, particularly as we evaluate new bonds going forward. I think that is, sprang from some of our discussion over the summer.
Yeah.
Early in the summer, yeah.
And I would just note for the record, that every time, and we'll see it tonight when we do the first reading, every time we issue a bond, we have a bond project list. So, we are, there is some constraints, so.
Yes.
Particularly for the public who's watching this, if you see there's a, a balance, those can only be set, spent on projects that are within the, the language of the bond ordinance itself. So, it's not, can't be used for payroll, for instance, things like that.
Exactly.
There are specific reasons it can be used for, so I, I just think that-
Exactly.
As we discuss this, we should have that preference.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. It looks like you're gonna start on twenty fifteen. That's fine. So if you start with twenty fifteen, that's our, our oldest general obligation bond that we have at this point in time, and we have sixty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars remaining in that bond, and that's currently remaining in cameras and hardware. I've spoken with our technical services department director, and he's been using that line, um, to replace cameras, um, and to put in additional cameras as necessary with, around our county government, uh, buildings. We do know that our jail has a, a need at this point in time for cameras and software. And so, um, at this point, I, um, I believe we're gonna get a RFP, or we're gonna be doing something.
I've requested a quote from an engineering firm to kind of get us, uh, bid specifications, so that we, when we bid it out, we can do that. So.
Yes.
I don't have that yet, um, but, but we've requested a quote for that.
Because we have no idea how much it's gonna cost.
I, I am nearly certain it's gonna be more than sixty-one thousand.
Oh, I know. I'm not done yet.
Yeah.
I'm not done with this project, yeah.
Okay, I was gonna say, I, I hope we see something from the jail and the current, uh, the jail, uh, cameras in the current bond, if we think we don't already have enough.
I think we have it.
Okay.
So, I think we're good.
Good.
So, don't, don't get ahead of me.
Okay.
So, we're good here. So that was twenty fifteen. Let's go to twenty sixteen A.
Okay.
That one has forty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents in it, and, um... Why we have not spent it, I, it is beyond me. The money remains currently in a facility space remodel, and so that's just, that's actually on our end of things. We should have spent that money before we spend it someplace else. Um, and so, that's, that's on me, so we'll get that taken care of. We got money.
Okay, no, I mean, no blame. I mean, that's not, that's not where I headed, I'm headed. I'm just very curious about how this works. So, this says to me that, that, I know you have other spaces being remodeled in the coming year. You'll take this, put it in with that, mm, that, another project that's similar, and you, and so next year, this will be zero?
Yeah, well, actually, I'm hoping within the next...
Okay.
Month, it would be zero. It could have been zeroed earlier, because we've done, you know, um, renovations, kind of, you know, in different spaces.
Sure.
We've moved the surveyor, you know, we're doing that, that kind of stuff. We could have expended this forty-eight ninety-nine. So it will be expended. It will not be here next year.
Okay, thank you.
If you go to twenty sixteen B, and I don't know if on your notes, that's where I had made the error. I thought I was looking at a different bond. But anyway, this is the bond where we actually have, no, this is not the bond, disregard. So, we have forty-seven thousand dollars, um, in this bond, um, for parks, and it's listed under a vehicle tenant scrubber, but I know that they're in need of a vehicle. We could certainly use that here, meets the criteria. So we can do that.
So, just to clarify, well, that could be removed then from the list for the proposed, uh, twenty-twenty-three bond, or twenty-
Tote it, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that could come from here.
This is, this is why we're doing this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, and there's actually more money in this particular, so, okay, so there's also another line that has a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in it, and a few hundreds. And that is, um, we're currently waiting to get an estimate for this particular room and to have a table, conference table, that would facilitate, uh, up to twenty people, and you could have your, your laptop, and it would meet a more efficient use of, of space and allow for a better collaboration, I think, between entities. This also includes new chairs, because for anybody who's sitting back there, those are horrid.
Yes.
And also, um, some new chairs here, um, so that the idea would be that these, those chairs along there would never be moved, because the moving them chairs, it's, it's difficult with them also, but then new chairs for use in here also, so. Um, don't have a total on that yet, but that's just gonna let us do some upgrades into the meeting room. Um, also in this bond, and I don't know why this happened, um, but we actually have an additional six thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars that were not, that was not, um, appropriated.
Hmm.
Um, I'm, I slept since I last looked at this. My note is under twenty-twenty-two, so I don't know if it was, we just failed to appropriate it in twenty-twenty-two, or what happened.
Six thousand eight hundred-
Eighty-two dollars.
And it says it's under twenty-twenty.
No.
Twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty-twenty-two is the column. Regardless, so there's initial money in there. So we do have, um, some money in here, but I don't see that, what I would do is the six thousand, we would put it back to the parks and their bobcat and a truck, I think. So, we've got some, that's where I would recommend that you put that.
Okay. How much was the, I just now got it to load to where it wasn't, the columns all messed up on top of each other, so I'm catching up. So you had four, four, do you have a hundred and fifty-one that was the meeting space?
Correct.
Got it, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's two sixteen B. You guys ready to go to twenty seventeen?
Hmm, yes.
All right, twenty seventeen has forty-seven thousand dollars in it, and that's under a trail expansion. And, um, right now, I'm waiting on an invoice from Kelly, uh, from the Parks Department. She's waiting on it from, um, the, the vendor. However, her, um, anticipated invoice is going to be fifty thousand. So, um, we will expend the twenty-seventeen bond in its fullest amount, and we will have to find the remaining two thousand five hundred in one of the other bonds here, which I think we can do. Clear as mud for everybody?
Absolutely clear.
All right, fabulous. Okay, twenty eighteen, this is the bond that I was meaning to talk about, and has mislabeled the other one before. The twenty eighteen bond, um, it doesn't have, it does not appear to have a lot of money in it. Uh, there's like fifteen hundred dollars under a building remodel, and there's three hundred and thirty-four under a justice building repair. That three hundred and thirty-four is, um, important because this bond actually was acting as a match for a next-level trails for, um, the Parks Department, and they have managed to get their, uh, the trail and everything done, and, uh, they actually have a hundred and fifty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and seven cents remaining. So the auditor is going to transfer that back into this fund, and so that one fifty-seven plus the sixty-one, I believe it is, um, yeah, sixty-one seven eighty, can all be attributed to, um, to use toward the jail camera and software.
Excellent.
Project.
Wow.
That's cool.
Yeah, I think it was quite fun to find out that we had that money, so.
Would that be under building remodel, or what, what category would you, or what?
I feel, believe it would fall-
Or infrastructure.
-under justice building. Even if you look at the projects, it says equipment at the jail.
Okay. Oh, yeah, you're right. Okay.
So I think we're in, I think we're in good shape. Yeah. Alrighty, twenty nineteen. You guys ready for that one?
Yep.
Um it is, so um this one still has some money in it. Um. One of those you'll see is property acquisition, which is two hundred eleven thousand dollars. And if not having an opportunity to talk with Mr. Cockwell, and I really haven't bothered to look at the description yet, but I believe we could actually use that. For our um sites, surveys possibly for um, you wanna look at that?
Actual bond document, yeah.
I can look at it, but I would prefer to be able to look at the actual bond document, to look at the project list, to see if that would qualify.
Yep, wasn't that for the quarry?
Yes, yes, that was the quarry purchase, so.
And by site surveys, do you mean Thompson or?
Yes, that's what I was wondering is is if we could use it for some of the expenses that might be um incurred. And but we'll have Jeff look at the um bonding documents to see if that can be used for that. We do generally make ourselves pretty flexible with a property purchase, but.
Yeah, I I would I would assume so, but until I actually see it, I can't say definitively.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
So there's that. And um let's see here. I would, um, okay, so we actually have a little bit another. Vehicle purchase. I think it's under vehicle purchase. My eyes aren't doing the. Purchase or bill or pin, building pin tuck. Building pin tucking, the eleven thousand. What I would propose, and I don't know if I have shared this with council as a whole. I've mentioned it to a couple, but the fairgrounds wifi um project that you guys approved through ARPA. Um they they experienced whatever everybody else is experiencing and the costs for that project were high was higher. Than what you guys and everybody had anticipated. Eight thousand and some dollars, don't have the number off the top of my head, um more. I would propose, because we have fairground improvements in this bond, that we could use eight thousand of that eleven thousand. To take care of that discrepancy. That way they're kind of make them whole on that project. You guys wanna vote on that? Should you vote on it?
Well, I think we need to hear from a county attorney that it's.
I I think that is a fairground improvement. The the I mean, I don't, if if the bond says fairground improvement, then I definitely think that that would be applicable.
I'm I'm in favor. I mean, I know you did mention that cost overrun.
And I believe it does say that because I believe that was the new features for the for the fairgrounds that came in.
Is there a twenty? Oh, is this just one bond that includes multiple things, includes fairground improvement?
Yes, it includes that, yeah. Yes, yeah. And then there's um twenty six thousand remaining um in the roundabout. And we anticipate having to use that um just kind of ongoing because we've got water systems in there now. And so we're just gonna use that to. Keep going forward with the roundabout.
Looks like two hundred thousand.
So are we are we good on this bond?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, do you agree there's about two hundred thousand in there, but you're saying you're gonna need that for the roundabout?
I believe there's actually, I'm looking here, there's actually fifty five thousand that was never appropriated at the very beginning. There's actually three hundred and five thousand dollars in there. So I don't know why it wasn't appropriated.
Oh, I see, okay.
I can assure you that when that bond was issued, it was all appropriated. So we'll have to. Look back and see what happened.
Okay.
Okay.
Just trying to learn.
Yes, actually, I think I think it was appropriated the first year and then after that it did not get appropriated. So are we good to move on?
Yes.
Uh twenty twenty getting kind of, you're gonna, these bonds have a a higher balance because we've got projects that are still kind of out there. Um furniture line, that's what we're gonna use to um outfit the surveyor's office and um. Over the showers building and I believe they're all very excited about that whole prospect. So I think that uh talked to Sliming and Kimball, I think they're gonna be. Doing some work in about a week or two, so that'll make everybody happy. Uh we have a vehicle purchase. It's thirteen thousand. I figured we'd throw that into, you know, um either airports. Or parks, um because we do have some other vehicle. We have vehicle money in in more than one bond here. Because it's been impossible, it's very difficult to get um vehicles. Um I'm just gonna speak for Mr. Kreider right now. He was, what day is today? It was yesterday or today? Today. You took, um he took some deputies to pick up three.
Really?
Uh we were supposed to pick up three, but unfortunately we only left with two due to a a a recall on one of the vehicles. They couldn't let it leave the lot.
Oh, my goodness.
Hasn't even left the lot. It's got a recall on it, so.
Wow.
Um and we actually have an order in for six, right? Or is it more than that?
That's correct.
Okay. Um so we're trying to get these um vehicles to our our sheriff's deputies, however. Um getting them there is out of our control, but yeah. Um so there's that. And then Kelly, here's another one. Kelly with the ADA for the parks. She's anticipating a a a um a bill coming in of of over five thousand dollars. And we show six hundred and seventy eight dollar balance in that particular line. So um. I'm hoping that we can maybe juggle some of the money for the surveyor's um furniture, gives us flexibility there. And the trail expansion, th- those trails are, the these are, this is a highway project, so it's going on to the next phase. So what we'll do is we will use this money to help support the 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 next phase, which will be in another bond.
So so I don't wanna jump ahead, but just as we were talking about vehicles, um. Will you be able to handle the, there were two vehicles that we took out of the airport budget, a skid sphere and a truck, I guess. And so you'll be able to handle those out of.
Yeah, we've already talked to um both Carlos and I think um Richard has asked him to get.
He submitted multiple quotes?
Thank you.
Good.
So that we can find the best one, because we couldn't find a um QPA on the state's website form. So are we good on that one?
Yes.
But yeah, I believe that, because you'll find as we're getting closer to twenty three. Um.
Yeah.
We have a substantial vehicle purchase balance that um gives us this flexibility. I mean, we might as well spend it, right? They need it now.
Yeah.
Let's get it. If we can get it to him, great. So. So are you guys ready to go to twenty twenty one?
Yes.
Okay, um this one. So um I, the bachelor sidewalk connector. That is a project that is expected to cost between two to three million dollars. At this point in time. And so um that's gonna be up to. Kind of you guys as to whether or not this is really a project that you want to pay for. Um I think that what I would recommend is that you speak with Lisa about this. She's gonna be much more knowledgeable.
There's some options.
Yeah.
Well, has the project moved any? I mean, we received the the initial analysis of alternatives and and feasibility study. Has has there been any anything that's happened beyond there?
No, that that was all she did. That I think they did, we paid for that, whatever that initial part was. And I think that the. The proposed cost just caused her to, because all we, because in that fund. Or it, we only appropriated two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
So it was never gonna pay for that project.
Some things that could be submitted for the the safety improvement money. The NPO, yeah.
I think that I would recommend talking to her.
A TA, transportation alternatives project. I don't know.
Yeah.
How far out we're we're spent, but I mean, it's a it's a good thought.
One thing on that one is, regardless of 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 the cost or preference, I think we gotta get to an answer on it. Because that area is the density alone, the library, I mean, we can't as a county keep going down there, cutting ribbons and celebrating. And not having that connected. We heard from that teacher in the dead of winter at that time. Uh we gotta figure that out because that's the future of how those kids are gonna, not only how they're gonna move, how they're moving now.
Yeah, there's just, there's some some real challenges there. There are a couple of very big mature trees that would probably have to be lost. And there are a couple of historic properties, including, you know, some very prominent historic wall um that's there. Uh that that would be really, I mean, you could work around, it's just it's money.
President Wells, did you see the message that Lisa Ridge put in chat?
Well, we're not, I mean, we're not evaluating those alternatives. I was just trying to figure out if anything happens since we received that.
I would just recommend that you guys talk with her and kind of figure out from there. So this twenty twenty one bond, um we still have a lot of things that are, haven't really been initiated. And I will tell you, the solar. Uh pump panel RFP went out and so we should be moving forward on on that particular project. Cause we have it here and in um some ARPA funding was provided for that one. Um.
When you say it's here and and the ARPA funding, not for the same solar panels, we need it, we need both the ARPA funding that we've discussed and. This project.
It's a whole project. It was a campus wide project, so um I believe this four hundred thousand is going towards the same, the overall. Looking at all of our buildings and properties.
Okay, but it's not like we need one or the other. We need both.
No, we need both. Yeah, sorry. So sorry, yeah, we need both. Yeah. Yeah, no. Um and then uh here's the one where you see where we have a lot of money for our vehicle purchases. And going back to, this is um Kelly with Flatwoods. She's got a twenty four thousand dollar balance. However, she has an outstanding invoice for twenty six thousand. So just to kind of give you an idea, how it kind of ebbs and flows. Um with the projects. And then our health building repair, we haven't started. We've been, we've had um Mr. Chambly out.
I think he's gonna start on the the plan in October.
Okay, that's thank you. Yeah, so we'll get moving on on that part of it. And that's more of the front, kind of the front. Before you get to the health department, because we did the health department first, we're also gonna be looking at options with the um. Loading dock off the back, because it's kind of wasted space at this point in time. We're always in need of space, so. Um just looking into that. So these projects are just kind of starting to. To get rolling. Uh the trail connector, that's another highway project. It has, I think it might be the same one. I get very confused. When I talk with Lisa um about these, but I think this is the same. I don't know. They're connected somehow.
Okay. That's okay.
Is it all part, and this one says Liberty Carst, so it's all part of the Bloomfield Road Carst Connector?
Yeah, but like different parts of it, maybe? If Lisa wants to send something in, let her know. So that's twenty twenty one. Thanks. Problem in twenty twenty two. So this one, we haven't done much with, because generally we get it like at the end of the year, like the twenty twenty three bond. It's always kind of a year behind, but anyway, um we're kind of rocking and rolling with those projects. We've got some flexibility that the parks, the restrooms, parks has an equipment line here. However, Ken Kelly is asking that we hold that for the restroom. She anticipates that that restroom project's gonna be much more than. What we had initially anticipated, so. Um and then the software and licenses, that's part of our disaster recovery um project that Mr. Cron is is doing. So we're working through that particular one. Here's the dump truck lease. This is why I recommended that we not have it in the twenty twenty three bond. Because they ordered them last, like fall, winter, you know, and they still don't have them. So we've got eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars sitting here now that I'd hate to waste that on another project for for the proposed new bond. And then the emergency notifications, uh Jamie, Ms. Nible is working on that project, so um it's kind of at her. But they're getting up and going with those.
Okay.
And I think we moved something that she had into cable that was dealing with sirens, so I think we're good.
Yeah.
This is really helpful. Thank you.
Well, good. Yeah, I'm glad you like it. I wasn't sure. I I had multiple iterations of this.
If I could clarify something for the people watching. She's saying like twenty twenty two bond, twenty twenty one bond. Those are the years that the bonds are issued.
Yeah.
Uh typically, we don't get those proceeds until December of that year, so.
Can't even do anything.
It would be very unusual if your twenty twenty two bond.
Had.
Didn't, had had all the all the project money spent. So it just kind of. I know everybody at this table knows, I'm just sitting there thinking, she's saying twenty twenty two. I mean, we've been sitting on on money for two years and it's like, no, I mean, you. There's some talk about twenty fifteen, maybe maybe that's a little too long, but.
Yeah.
Um I don't think anybody would deny that, but twenty twenty two would mean that, you know, we've had that, the ability to spend that funds for less than. Ten, twelve months.
Okay, so that brings us up to the twenty twenty three bond and I believe Jeff would talk about that first. Oh, but you have to introduce that.
Yes, because that is a separate item. Well, are there any other questions on the old bonds?
This is great. No, this was very.
Very helpful to.
Yeah.
Doing precisely what I think we thought that would do, so thank you.
Yeah, that's been, that's been good. So um we will go ahead and do. The discussion and first reading, I believe, of um the twenty twenty three Geo bond.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and establish this is the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash thirty four. And ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds and ordinance twenty twenty three dash thirty five. An appropriation ordinance for the general obligation bond of three point one million dollars for projects which include, but are not limited to. Number one, various buildings and office space improvements, including furniture, carpeting, tile, office space system renovations. New office system, restroom improvements, computer improvements, and audio video equipment improvements. Number two, parking garage improvements, including security and gate systems. Three, carst trail extension. Four, four dump trucks. Five, Bobcat UV. And six, carst filled turf. And all related improvements and the incidental expenses in connection with these projects. And all related improvements in the incidental expenses in connections with these projects.
Second.
And and I guess I'll just start off with, you 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 heard I read the bond list. That's what we're talking about. When we look at those past bonds and we wanna be able to utilize funding. We have to make sure it fits within that bond's bond list. Um so I. So and and I think we do this every year. We we talk about these bonds. The the bond documents not changed every year. Um I either point out or I'm asked to point out that the there is a finding that the the that the council finds. That the county does not have sufficient funds available or provide for in the existing budgets and tax levies. And that may be applied to the cost of this project, these projects. I I'm always asked it every year that this does contain that language. Um but but essentially, this is just uh the first step. In evaluating these bond projects. I will say that when we started this um. These bond, Geo bonds, when I was here, they were always two million because that was the high end. That the state law allowed before you had to do a a lot of additional procedural processes. Uh that law is cha- was changed a few years ago and at that point in time, it was five point one million. With an escalator clause based upon, I think it's the same as the property tax rate, but I'm I'm not positive. I I would tell you today that if in order to hit those procedures, you've got to be about six point one million dollar bond. But we, but the county um council and the county commissioners for the last few years have settled on the three million to three point one million dollar range. So I I just point that out. Um and I guess typically, your questions are about the projects. Um, and I guess typically, your questions are about the projects. And so if you have any questions about the, the docu, legal documents themselves, you may ask me at any, any time. If you read tomorrow, you go to sleep tonight restless and for some reason this helps you sleep. Um, and you read it and you see something you have questions about, feel free to give me a call and uh I'll either get them answered or I will either immediately or I will make sure that I communicate that to the bond council and we'll get, we'll get you answers. But, I mean, this is just kind of a, a standard document, has the form of the, what the bonds will actually look at so that, so that you guys know what, what they look at. Again, nothing in here other than the project list I think has materially changed since last year. Um, so I think everybody's kind of seen it at least once before, but I always more than happy to answer any questions about that. And then is this, this four thirty-four, are we also doing the appropriation at this time?
I think my motion had thirty-four and thirty, pardon me, uh, had thirty-four and thirty-five.
Yeah, didn't you read both?
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. And if, if, if you look at the appropriation ordinance, I, I, this is why I can say I am certain that it was, all those bond, that money's were appropriate at the time, because the, essentially, the, the appropriation appropriation ordinance matches the not-to-exceed amount of the bond, which in this case, again, it's three point one million. And so we always appropriate the full amount at, at this point in time, because, you know, we look at the project list and, and we, we move forward from there. So if you don't have any questions, I'm going to turn it over to Angie to talk about the projects.
I have questions.
All right.
Okay.
Questions for either of them on either of those things, how's that?
Well, Angie's gonna talk about the projects, right?
Okay.
Oh, I thought, I thought that's what he just said.
That's what he said.
Oh, I thought he, I, I apologize. I thought he said you can ask Angie questions.
I'm sorry, I, I misheard that.
No.
Cause I do have questions about the projects.
All right.
Do you want me to just to kind of go over the proposed projects?
Let's do that, do a quick overview and we can go from there.
One question, did you check on the parking lot? We have it in another.
I know.
Okay. Okay, thank you, just wanted to confirm, all right. Um, so the, initially, we had proposed um some upgrades for the clerk's office, which included furniture and front, front counter renovation, putting office systems into their space, um, as well as providing new carpet or tile in, in that area. We also had, um, and, and this was an estimate. In order to get an actual anticipated cost, we actually had to pay, we would have to pay to have uh the architect go in and give us some designs. It's also included um a uh drop-down, I call it like a garage door, I don't know what else it's called, but it would require some reconfigurations within that office, because they do have open, like the, the counter doesn't go all the way to the wall, there's, there's a space. So people can just walk straight back into their desk area. There's a couple of spaces like that. So that was part of this project, um, was to look at if we could stop that, stop access just free, freely going into the back. And then also providing with the drop-down kind of garage door type issue in the event of an emergency. Um, we do have that over the health department. I thought of that in, in response to the clerk has expressed concerns. Um, and so I thought that was a, 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 a possible answer to, to her, her concerns. And then it also included the prosecutor's office for new office systems, because they've not set a peep. And so I, you know, they have been as long as the clerk, as far as not having any office systems. And so I think that would be appropriate to include them into this bond also. Again, you know, this is all at your decisions. Um, the other, the one, the, the main things also that we wanted to do in, in the justice building is our toilets, sinks, urinals, and the tile in the second and third floor bathrooms for the public are really needing to be rehabilitated. They're not, um, they're not code anymore, you know, they're not really ADA, they're not ADA compliant. They just, they look dirty no matter how clean you try to glam, so those are, those were thrown on here. And, and I, um, technical services department, they are needing to refresh probation, clerk in court, and then also do a courtroom audio recording replacement. I may have those, the names wrong, um, but the amount is correct. I know that Greg was able to kind of transfer around and did one department that I didn't know he was able to do, so. Um, he could certainly give you more information on that. Parking garage, and I will let um Richard speak to this if he would like, he didn't know I was gonna tell him, ask him to do this. But we were looking into a security gate system for a parking garage, because right now, um, you can enter it, just.
The garage is open twenty-four seven, anybody can enter at any time. And we've had some, uh, some cases of vandalism and that type of thing uh happening over, I, I guess, the course of the couple, few years it's been open. Um, I'm looking into having a, uh, it's a roll-down gate. Um, maybe, maybe during normal business hours, we, we use the, the gate arms. But after a certain time in the evening, the roll-down gate uh goes into play. And um we'll have to install some fencing on the, the side of the, the garage on the first floor. But that will secure that facility.
And the roll-down gate goes up and down, right?
It goes up and down, yeah, you, you drive up, you use your proximity card and, and you go and. Yeah, I, I, I went to, uh, I went to Indianapolis to check out a couple that they installed up there, and it's, it's a really neat system.
So that, that's, um, that's the parking garage item.
Yeah.
And Carst Trail Exten, Extension Construction, that is more of this, the one that's continuing from the past. So we'll be able to take all that money and apply it to the construction that goes forward. We talked about the dump trucks, which I recommended to coming off, and the Bobcat we can take care of in older bonds. And it, I put the Carst Field Turf in here at one point two million. And then I also added, um, after hearing about the AE, the sheriff's need for AEDs, I've added those to this list. So I've given you an original submission, which did not include the AEDs. Um, that was four point two million dollars. I then went back through and I thought maybe we could do some modifications. Maybe we can see what we can get done with less money attributed specifically to the clerk's project. Um, I reduced the money appropriate to the toilet, sinks and urinals, but probably what would happen is kind of see what was more expensive, you know, want to do the toilets first, or over the furniture for the prosecutor's office. So we, we've got some play in those three items there. Um, but I felt like we could still kind of reduce the initial starting time nu, um, numbers. Added the sheriff's AEDs, I put a hundred and ten thousand, I think it was a hundred and eight maybe, but um, I'm sure by the time we go to buy them, they're gonna be more than a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So, um, I reduced the uh technical services refresh, kept the courtroom audio recording at the same amount. Um, I think that's, that's, if, if anybody needs to go without a, a refresh, it's not the courtroom, so make sure that they get straightened up. And uh kept the Carst Trail the same amount, we could take off the Bobcats. And so as you can see, my adjusted um amount for twenty twenty-three is, is less than three point one, it's just three million and one. Thousand, three million and one.
Now, do we have those numbers in front of us, we do, that's.
Yeah, you should have them in front of you, I sent them out to you.
That's the more recent email.
It was also in that one doc, or that one um book I sent out.
Well, but the numbers are, the numbers are the old ones.
No, I sent you this new one.
Is it, but was it a separate email? I guess that's.
No, I think I included it in the, the book that had all of the, because I remember Kim, didn't you ask me to, to do that and I did?
No, it, it is a separate email and it only has the twenty twenty-three, I, I found it here.
It should be another one also, because I then changed it and added it.
And it does come out to just over three million, three million one, one thousand, right? That's what, okay.
Yeah, so I'm here, I hear, um, there's, there's a parking lot issue with airport?
Paid seventy thousand dollars in paving, um, that we removed from, uh, for the parking lot that we removed from his budget.
I think there's room for it in here now. I heard you say hmm.
Well, I said hmm, because we, it, it, not included in that three million that, that I know of is the transactional cost involving the.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I, I, I don't think what's included in that, that three million are the transactional costs with the bond council and the financial advisors. Those typically run forty to fifty thousand i, for those costs. So I think you could pay for a good portion of that out of, out of this.
Well, we're taking the twenty-six thousand out, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the Bobcat's still in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, the, the, maybe it works out.
I think it works out.
I don't have it in front of me. But if you say you have three hundred, or three million one thousand, and you're adding seventy, I think you're going to have, you're not going to be able.
But we're taking twenty-six out.
So, so that would probably work.
Well, and, and what about the, the, you know, I get the uh toilets and sinks and fixing those, but how much do we want to spend on office systems in the justice building when we're going to be moving everybody out and into a new facility?
I think that's a legitimate question.
I would really be as minimal, you know, if there are safety issues that need to be addressed. Although I am curious about that, because the, the justice building is, I mean, there's an armed guard and a metal detector, right? And an X-ray machine, right?
Correct.
So are there generally, I mean, well, it seems like that's, there's already a, the, it's probably one of the safer buildings in county government to work in. I mean, certainly compared to the, to the courthouse here.
Yeah, it's definitely safer than any of our other buildings.
I'm just wondering, I, I just think that maybe the six hundred thousand dollars for office systems and, and renovations might not entirely be necessary, just given that we're gonna build a brand-new building.
I, I, I of course want people to be uh in comfortable settings and get what they need. And so I think there's probably a line there where we, where you all have to kind of figure out, what do, what do folks need to do well? I, I do wonder about making changes to, to, to areas that are gonna, um, gonna have some movement. I, I, ever since we redid this room with the sound and the video and other things, I am now a little bit more skittish and a little bit less wink, wink at, towards upgrades in technology. Now, I don't want anyone to take any offense for that, I just, I've not exactly been blown away. I thought Star Trek was coming in and I don't think it did. Um, but that said, I think that the folks affected by this could best answer how they would benefit potentially. The safety and security, that is important to me. Um, so if we could figure out some sort of happy compromise there, but I am a little nervous about anything massive with the justice building in light of all the discussion we had tonight about, shoot, moving this and do change in that, so.
Totally up to you guys, I don't think that the, like I said, the prosecutor's office never has not set a peep. I'm the one that added them because, and, and, and the reason this start was, became a thought and why it was part of the bond thinking was at the time that we were thinking of bond projects, there was absolutely no, we did, there wa, there was talk of not co-locating our ser, you know, our services. And so, you know, that's what made us think, okay, these people are gonna still be in this facility, so we need to. But that, kind of, that length, that conversation's kind of changed a little bit.
Well, I guess all I'm saying is that, I'm not saying eliminate them, I'm saying, well, we eliminated twenty-six thousand from the Bobcat.
Mm-hmm.
And we'd like to fit in, at least I think we'd like to fit in seventy thousand paving for the airport, because we all talked about that before. I mean, that, that doesn't mean you don't have to shave a lot from the cost of that, of the court.
I think you just add it to the project.
Of the justice stuff.
Counsel Iverson?
Yeah, uh, are we done on that certain topic? I just wanted to raise a, a different project, if that's all right. Uh, the, the Carst Field. Yeah, the uh, the turf field, yeah. Uh, so that has been presented but to the commissioners, it's been presented to the council, no substantive changes have occurred in that project?
Not that I'm aware of, I did forward to everybody um a, a letter from Visit Bloomington.
Visit Bloomington on economic benefits of.
Yes, of, of bringing in um teams.
Particularly tourism-related, because I think part of the conversation has always been to utilize, uh, potentially utilize food and beverage for, for that project as well. And as we all know, if we're going to utilize food and beverage, we have to go through the, not only do we have to go through the, the food and beverage uh process, but we also have to make a showing that this is tourism-related. And this is a tourism project. And so I think that's important, that we had the information from our Visit Bloomington uh group that shows these are the things we are missing on, because we do not have these, and these are the type of tourism dollars. And it, I don't have it in front of me, but there were some very large numbers associated with just a three, four-day event and the economic impact of that, so I, I think that's.
Kelly Whitmer asked, uh, not for, not to send a dissertation, but that list is extensive.
Yeah, it's very nice.
There's a lot of uh economic activity that we're missing on. So I guess my question is, if we all look, looking at this, this Geo bond, that one point two million dollars allocated there, there's another portion of the project that is thought to be, will be taken care of with food and beverage. Is that correct, or is that, is it more that there's a cer, explain to me how these two interact with each other?
Um, it would be in addition to, so I, I see it as you, you kind of have three different pots, and I'm gonna add a third pot, um, the ARPA pots. Um, for the, the county's lost revenue, you guys could elect to put some of that, those funds to it. So you really have three pots that you can pull from to pay for this project. Um, and, and I believe the project overall is like four million something, um, so.
Okay, is that four, that's four fields or two?
Yeah, I thought it was four.
That's four fields plus lighting, plus the LED lighting?
It's, I don't have the report in front of me, but the, the report was, it was over four million for the four fields plus the lighting. I, I don't recall how the lighting in the fields broke down, I, I honestly, I don't recall what that final total was, but I know it was over four.
Those are my questions.
I have a procedural question to ask, uh, having to do food and beverage. Um, I believe the legislation, they changed it so that, that Advisory Commission, they, it used to be that they had to give permission before you could spend the money. Now, I don't believe that's in the legislation, although you are required to take it there, present it to them. But it doesn't say they have to approve it. So I'm just wondering if we have a, if everybody's been appointed to that board? And if, I, I'm just, want to make sure we don't lose any of those steps, so that if you want to take it there, get it out of that money, but I think you do have to present it to them first.
I do believe it would have to go to that commission, as far as everybody being appointed, I don't have that information.
What was that part, as far as what?
E, everybody appointed to the Advisory Commission for the food and beverage?
Yeah, they're down one, aren't they?
Are they down one?
Yeah.
I thought, I thought there was an appointment to replace uh Mr. Chitelli.
Yeah.
Are we talking about a, a different one, I thought that, I've.
I thought they, I thought it was.
We will, we will, we will look into that and we will confirm whether that.
It's the very last portion, very last sentence in there that you want to look at, because we no longer have to, we can move forward, but we have to present it first. And that means the commissioners.
Well, Kelly Whitmer, I think, has her hand raised.
She just clarified that it was a, the four million dollars was for two fields with lights.
Okay.
Just a tad over four million dollars.
Okay.
Well, it's only two fields.
Two fields. I thought two fields was.
It's two fields of artificial turf and drainage, you know, and.
Is Kelly able to speak, are we allowed to? I mean, she, she's willing to.
Yeah, I would, I would, I think she. It looks like she.
Hello?
There we are.
Yeah.
Can you hear me? I can, yes.
I can, yes. Yes, it's definitely two fields with lights for a tad over four million.
With any irrigation improvements on the other, the grass fields?
No, that's just for two synthetic fields with lights.
Yes, it is.
Kelly, can you forward that information to us all again?
No problem.
I'm glad the problem followed.
So, so could you just forward it to us weekly from now?
No problem. We have one paid budget summary.
Yeah, it's a lot. I mean, there's a, it's an investment that then, and I know some people don't like to use investment this way, but but you, you know, you, you pay now and immediately you can save on operations costs from not mowing. And, you know, being able to use the fields full-time. So frankly, yeah, I'm, I'm all about trying to figure out how to fund this and get as much of it as possible.
And, and I will add to that, of all the issues when I'm out and about talking with constituents, you think about all the things we deal with, this is one of the most talked-about, hottest issues. And people tell me all the time, don't laugh about it just because you can't play soccer and you don't know what you're talking about. We want you to do something about this. I mean, I hear this.
We do get requests.
With all the things we're dealing with that are a little bit more lighting than this, the parents and taxpayers do talk about this a lot.
Yep.
Kelly, is that the option one, fields nine and seven, nine and eleven?
Yes, for synthetic turf.
I just wanna say that's, having all, all of our department heads just hanging out on Zoom, bless their hearts. Well.
I guess I have a.
There's a city council meeting tonight.
A request, because I, I feel this is wrapping down. I, I think what I've heard tonight, I would like you guys to formally amend the description of projects that I can make sure that the commissioners' approval also has it formally amended to remove the dump trucks and the Bobcat because that apparently is not on. And add the AED for item four and parking apron for airport for item five on the exhibit A. Essentially, I'm asking you to remove the two projects that we've indicated would remove and add the two projects that I think I've heard everybody wants to be added, just so that the project description.
Yep.
Matches.
Yeah, what, what, I'm sorry, what page is?
It is page forty-three of your packet.
It is indeed.
That is very helpful. Thank you.
Okay. All right, counsel, I move, we amend the exhibit A description of projects to, let's see, replace item four, four dump trucks with airport parking lot paving and replace item five, Bobcat UV, with AEDs for sheriff's vehicles.
Second.
Any discussion on that amendment?
Right, I'm not looking at what you're looking at, but paving project I thought was seventy-four thousand.
Well, we don't have to have the numbers in, this is just the description of project, so we don't have to have that.
Because I think four dump trucks would be a whole lot more than seventy-four thousand.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying.
Right, but they were at four million. We can go back up to four million dollar bond if you.
Absolutely not, but I will, I will say.
I'm sure.
I will say on the local budget notices, in case you wanted to get a shock, I know everybody's been studying those, right? Okay, good thing somebody did. However, the, for the bond, it was advertised at five million. Now, I'm not suggesting you do that, I'm just saying. So we know that we can do the three-point one.
I said, let's just go as high as we can, just in case something happens.
Yeah, advertise high and go low. Could we have a, do we need, yeah, a roll call vote on the amendment?
With everyone present, you could do a voice vote.
On, on bonds, let's, it's big enough, let's do a.
All right.
Sorry.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson is not present. Counselor Hawke?
Yes, that doesn't mean I'm gonna vote for the bond, I'm just voting for what the rest of you are going to put in the bond.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed six-zero.
Thank you. Are there other questions about the projects? Okay. I wish we could say et cetera, but I understand that that's not allowed.
Thank you.
I know.
In that case, could we have a roll call vote on the?
This is a introduction, first reading only.
Oh, we don't read that.
I wanted to vote on the amendments so we could make sure that it was formally introduced and there wasn't any questions about that.
Got it.
And then for the next time, I will have a cleaned-up proposal on the project.
That would be great.
And we'll give you kind of an idea as to how they'd be broken down, but we'll include the seventy-four thousand for the airport apron.
Great, and then we'll put this item on the October tenth agenda. That's our October.
I will review the bond schedule to make sure, because we have an advertising requirement prior to that. I think it's already gone out.
Okay.
But I, I don't wanna tell you it's gonna be the tenth and then it'd be, it'll be the tenth or the work session.
Okay.
Just don't remember this.
One or the other. We'll get it as soon as you let us know. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna do one more item, well, a two-parted item with you all. And then we'll take a recess, if that's okay. I know it's. Is that all right? Just so that they can leave when it, okay. Okay.
Counsel, I move to approve the commissioner's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 11140068. List special purpose commissioners of fifty thousand dollars in the capital category.
Second.
Thank you, Richard Kreider, facilities and fleet manager. I'd like to start off by reading the summary. On five, six, twenty-one, an order was submitted on behalf of the Monroe County Commissioners and Youth Services Bureau in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and eighty cents for a twelve-to-fourteen passenger transit bus with lift to replace the two thousand and three model year bus still in use. In late twenty-twenty-two, the department was notified that the order would not be fulfilled citing inventory and supply chain issues. The department has found a comparable replacement, which is one hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars. The fund currently has seventy-five thousand dollars appropriated. An additional fifty thousand dollars would cover the purchase price, decals, plates, and registration. Now, I also wanna add, when the original order was canceled, I thought it was a great opportunity to explore electric. And after receiving quotes and, and talking to the sales folks and, and the staff at the Youth Services Bureau, I kind of tabled that and went back to, to the gasoline option. So I think, if anybody's curious about it, I think what sealed the deal for me was that the, the range was around a hundred and fifty miles or so between charge. And the way it was explained to me is that with that, that bus fully loaded on a ninety-degree day and, and the air conditioning cranking, your, your range maybe has dropped in half at that point in time. And when those folks are on a field trip somewhere, that creates an operational issue. Any questions?
No, I can attest to that performance issue in my own vehicle, so I get that completely. I'm surprised that the range is only one fifty to start, you know, but with a big vehicle, it probably makes sense. Counselor McKim?
Is this new?
Yes, it's, it's actually, it's new. I think part of it is a twenty-twenty-two and the other part is twenty-twenty-three because you have the chassis separate from, I guess, the, the body. Yeah, the, it's.
It's a truck.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it looks like a truck without a bed when they roll it in. And by the time they put the, the seats in and the, the body around it, it's, they're two separate things.
Counselor Iverson and then Counsel Munson.
So, given that the last vehicle, the order was not fulfilled, where are we at with this vehicle? The order's been placed, do we have the vehicle? What's the?
I signed a letter of intent to place a hold on it. It was for only thirty days, but they have been gracious enough to extend that for some time now.
This market is just so wild.
It is.
Man, all right, and twice the price.
It is.
The price doubled.
The price doubled.
But I mean, it's needed.
Oh, it's definitely needed.
It's for the kids.
It's for the kids.
The model they're, they're driving now is a two thousand and three and it, it needs replaced badly.
Counsel Munson?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, did you look into hybrids? Because they have been really pretty good at getting improved mileage.
Yeah, I, I did look into hybrid. My research on the hybrid for that style of bus didn't bear near as much fruit as the, the gasoline and the electric.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, where are we? Could we please, oh, public comment on this item? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke? Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Counsel, I move to approve the commissioner's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 41120000 donations special program of three hundred dollars in the services category.
Second.
I'm sorry, go right ahead.
All right, this, this request is, I believe it was to pay for DJ services for the Paint Town Purple event that we held recently. And I was told that it was a really great event, we probably had more people than we've had in the past.
That's true.
And so this is just, this, this fund actually has money in it. It's money that has been donated or received as a result of people attending prior substance use opioid, opioid.
Summit.
Thank you. What's that called? And so they, they have twenty-seven thousand dollars in there currently at this point in time. So this three hundred would go towards the DJ. And just to kind of put a spark out there for everybody that this, the Paint Town Purple event is designed to increase awareness, reduce the stigma associated with substance use disorders and allow parents, friends, siblings, and those who are fighting and maybe not even also not ready to start fighting the disorder and, and provides a place to get resources and support. So it's a really, it was a really good event. It's good for our community, so.
Well described, thank you. Counselor Iverson?
Yeah, just wanted to plug, the DJ in question is DJ Darren Mosley of Misfit Toys. He is, this is his, multiple years he's been doing this, and he is absolutely fantastic. This event is, as, as was said, to de-stigmatize substance use disorder. And he has cultivated a playlist of artists that have succumbed to substance use disorder. So it's a really powerful, moving event. He did an amazing job. Check out the Indiana Public Media article on it. Commissioner Githens and I were interviewed.
Cool, very cool. Counselor Hawke?
Yes, can you tell me, there's no public dollars put in there, it's all private dollars? So this is not government spending?
Nope.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Questions or comments? All right, is there any public comment? I'm looking. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. We are gonna have a ten-minute recess at seven, it's seven forty-five. So let's be back at seven fifty-five. Welcome back. We are going to resume our meeting. I'd like to note that Counselor Hawke has left. She may rejoin us on Zoom, but as of right now, she's not here. And we are on item number eight on our agenda.
Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request to create a new account line, three, seven, four, one, nine, ARPA, bicentennial trail non-matching in Fund eight, nine, five, zero, 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 American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA.
Second.
And we have Bree Gregory from our auditor's office joining us, probably from a hotel room, since you're out of training, right?
That is true. Good evening, everyone. I am at the AIC conference right now, so I am joining, joining you from French Lick, but happy to be here. So yes, this item is just a housekeeping item. We had appropriated originally seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars in the bicentennial local match project. However, it was later determined that these funds are not all part of a match. So in order to properly report and track, we need to separate this out. So I'm asking that you please de-appropriate six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and then appro-, then add a new account line for the same amount of money so that we can properly track these funds.
All right.
And, yeah, just one more point. So as we, you know, get into the expenses that will go into this new account line, should you approve, we may or may not be able to remove this from revenue loss, which, we'll keep you posted as that occurs.
Okay. Other questions for the auditor's office? All right, is there any public comment on this creation of new account line? Seeing, seeing none, I believe, because I need to show all the boxes here. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thanks. Next item is B.
Counsel, I'd like to table this item to Tuesday, October tenth, the regular session.
Second.
Sounds good. Do we vote on the tabling, then? All right, all in favor of tabling this to our next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
That was everybody. Moving on.
Counsel, I move to approve the park department's request for a fund-to-fund transfer of cash of one hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred sixty-four dollars and seven cents from Fund nine, one, zero, seven, zero, 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 Next Level Trail to Fund four, eight, one, one, zero, 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 twenty eighteen general obligations bond.
Second.
Are there questions? Are there questions? Oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, no, you, um, so this is another one of those housekeeping items. Um, we're just returning, returning funding, um, from where it originated that wasn't used, so.
Right, and I believe we discussed this earlier with Ms. Purdy, um, as she was going over the previous bonds. Are there questions from counsel? Nope. Um, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Now we go to number 10.
Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request to de-appropriate account line 30006 Contractual in Fund 91610000 Airport Monitoring System in the amount of $2,400.
Second.
Okay, everyone, this is my third and final housekeeping item for you tonight. Um, as we, you know, go through correct issues that are found, um, you know, we just want to be transparent and, um, receive your approval. So this is that final piece there, just to de-appropriate, um, unnecessary funds.
Alright, questions from counsel? Any public comment? And, see, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, counsel. Good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Now we move to item 11 from our Highway Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request of an additional appropriation in Fund 11760000 Motor Vehicle Highway in the amount of $400,000 in the Supplies category.
Second.
And, do we have, Ms. Ridge? Could you promote Lisa Ridge, please? There you go. Now she's on with us. Hello?
Hello. Um, so if you're, I'll make this quick. I know you have a long meeting. Uh, we had put out two more roads, uh, for paving and, um, we opened bids. It did come in under the 400,000, um, so we won't, I don't anticipate spending all of this, but, uh, we would like to award these projects to the, um, the two low bidders, which is Starnes Road and, draw a blank, um, Mount Zion, Mount Zion Road, or Birch Road, Birch Road, that's it. Birch Road and Starnes Road.
Okay, alright. Um, and are there questions, um, from Lisa on this? Alright. Um, well, I am glad to hear that your bids came in low. That's good. Um, is there any public comment? Okay, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Um, we are at item 12.
Okay, counsel, I will be combining items A and B into one single motion. I move to approve the jail's request for additional appropriations in Fund 11700380 Public Safety Lit Jail of $3,417.14 in the Personnel category. And in Fund 100380, General Fund Jail of $168,005.28 in the Personnel category.
Second.
Okay, um, do we have anyone online from the jail? I'm checking. Okay, um, is there any?
I was gonna say, I know what this is about, if you would like for me to do that.
Sure, please.
So this, um, is the result of the 15% increase, um, that was, uh, awarded to the jail, um, after budgets were approved. So, um, I asked Jordan and worked with Jordan, the financial manager. Um, he has gone through and did in-house transfers of all the lines that he could possibly take care of. Um, so this, uh, what you're seeing is the result of what is needed to finish out the rest of the year with regards to the salary increase.
Are there any questions or comments from counsel?
Are we going to, do you know if we're gonna see a similar request for the merit deputies or do, was there more to transfer around on the sheriff's side?
Yes, he was still in the process. I talked to him earlier th- uh, this week, maybe latter of last week, and they're still working on moving people around. So, yeah, we'll be getting one for them as well.
Yep. Alright, any more questions? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Uh, item 13 from our Probation Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Probation Department's request of a category transfer in Fund 49130000 Reducing Revocations Challenge of $16,500 from the Supplies category to the Services category.
Second.
Alright, welcome, Mr. Hatfield.
Hi, uh, Troy Hatfield, Deputy Chief Probation Officer. So, uh, this is just related to our Reducing Revocations Challenge grant. We're trying to spin down the grant funds. Um, and we got approval from our, uh, granting agency to kind of move, um, some of the funds down to con- contractual. Um, uh, you see that there, there were training supplies that we're moving and supervision incentives. Um, what we're doing right now is we're completing some training with all of our staff, uh, actually this week and, um, two weeks from now. Uh, and then, uh, some of the money that we had already identified to help supplement the training within, uh, some of our current budgets. We're going to look at kind of replacing those supervision incentives as we continue working through this grant through the rest of the year. The grant officially ends on September 30th, so this Saturday, but, uh, you know, we've pledged to this department to continue working on this initiative and work on our progress that we've maintained, uh, so far over the past few years. Uh, we do have a final report that's coming out soon, uh, that will get posted and, uh, I'm sure we'll get notice out to all of you so that you can kind of see what our progress was and how that grant turned out. Um, and in fact, uh, next week, um, Linda and I and several other people from the staff, uh, are gonna go up to Minneapolis and present, uh, on our Phase 2 and the, the findings that we've had and the implementation that we've done. Uh, that's all being paid for by a granting agency, um, not any of our local funds. Um, but it's kind of exciting to be able to go up there and, and present on, uh, what we did and, and what we've been able to implement so far in our department.
That's great. Um, are there questions or comments, Counselor Iverson?
Uh, I'll, I'll start with a comment and then ask a question. Um, this is just such a great, uh, grant. Uh, as you know, uh, the Reducing Revocations Challenge, uh, solutions played a pivotal role in the way we were thinking about fiscal recommendations, um, as, as we were talking over the summer about what we could be doing. So, uh, it was great to have those reports, uh, available. So, uh, congratulations again on, on, on this. Uh, my question is, uh, do we have any, uh, anything that we know about Phase 3 or, and any new updates on that?
Not so far. I'm hoping to learn next week, um, when, because all five sites that were funded for Phase 2 are gathering up there along with our funder, our granting body, Arnold Ventures. And, uh, I know we're all gonna kind of be lobbying for some funding to kind of look at Phase 3, which would really kind of evaluate some of the things that we're implementing within the department to see what's really working well for us and if we're making some progress on reducing those revocations. And what I mean by that is, um, our goal is, um, uh, is to just try to keep people on a successful path, reduce the number of violations that they might have, uh, while they're under community supervision, which in turn would reduce the number of people that are likely to end up in jail or prison later on. Um, so I think that's a win for our community if we can successfully do that. And, uh, we would love to see how well, uh, the things that we're implementing have an effect on that and what kind of progress we're making. So we're, we're definitely hoping for, for money, uh, in the future to help evaluate that.
Good luck. If there's anything we can do to help, let us know.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Um, alright, any public comment on this item? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
And now item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Probation Department's request for the creation of a new account line, 20210, Program Supplies, and to simultaneously approve a category transfer in Fund 91450000, JDAI Programming, of $4,200 from the Services category to the Supplies category.
Second.
So, uh, this is our Juvenile Detention Alternatives Grant, or part of that, uh, that we receive each year. Um, there are two things to this. Uh, one is to correct an error I made when I set up the budget. I, uh, put money in the wrong spot. Um, and that's the supervision incentives I put in contractual. They should have been down in the, uh, the twenties for the, uh, that. And then the second piece of that, though, is we, we did a quick revision or amendment to our grant, uh, that was approved by the state. And that was to move some money into Program Supplies for the Youth Services Bureau. Um, we wanna try to support, uh, one of their newer programs. It's a truancy termination program. Uh, we were able to fund them for about $1,500 last year. We'd like to continue that funding again this year for this school year, um, and this would help us do that as well.
These are the easy things to vote for. Um, any comments or questions from counsel? Any public comment? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. We are now at item 14 from our Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 81389624 Immunization in the amount of $100,600 in the Services category.
Second.
Alright, um, welcome, Ms. Kelly.
Good evening. Um, this is just standard immunization funding that supports our public health clinic. This helps to, um, support personnel, uh, vaccine storage and supply.
Alright, any questions or comments on this one? Any public comment on this appropriation? Could we have a roll call vote?
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
And B?
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request of additional appropriations in Fund 81509623 Tana Futures in the amount of $8,436 in the Personnel category, $3,982 in the Supplies category, and $817 in the Services category, for a total appropriation of $13,235.
Second.
And what is this one?
Um, so this is just more program revenue that we brought in from insurance reimbursements and for the, um, LARQ reimbursement. So we are just looking to appropriate this to then be able to use these funds to cover, um, clinic costs.
Can you remind me what LARQ is?
Uh, the Long Act Being Reversible Contraceptives.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Any public comment? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
C?
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for additional appropriations in Fund 81049624 Public Health Emergency Preparation in the amount of $7,650 in the Personnel category, $4,641 in the Supplies category, and $12,709 in the Services category, for a total appropriation of $25,000.
Second.
Okay.
Uh, so this is, uh, the original grant term was set to expire at the end of June 2023 and the Indiana Department of Health has extended this for an additional year. Um, this helps to support, uh, again, just part-time assistance, so personnel and then other emergency supplies.
Alright, are there questions from counsel?
Yes.
It, this is the City's Readiness Program or the City's Readiness Initiative, is that right?
Uh, oh, yes. Yes.
Is, is there talk about extending the funding pass next year at all, or, uh?
Uh, yes, so I've heard a little bit of, um, mixed feedback with that, but most recently I have heard about this being continued. Um, there's really a lot involved in this, uh, grant with these deliverables, um, so I do see these initiatives continuing, but I don't have that guarantee at this moment.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Is there a public comment on this item? Seeing none, could I have a roll call vote?
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
I am D.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 81819624 Long-Term COVID in the amount of $175,252.27 in the Services category.
Second.
Um, and this is just additional, uh, COVID relief funding. This also helps to support our public health clinic, uh, personnel, supplies, vaccines. Um, we do not expect this supplemental funding to continue after the end of this cycle.
Okay, questions or comments from counsel? Public comment? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Now, we have come to item 15 on our agenda, and it is the Justice Fiscal Advisory Committee and the presentation of the JFAC recommendations. And I'd like for Counselor Iverson to present.
Uh, thank you, uh, President, Madam President. Uh, wait, we, uh, the Justice Fiscal Advisory Committee, which was formed by the Monroe County Council, uh, acted, uh, this evening to forward this 16-page document to you. Um, the work that we had set out to do, um, has resulted in this document. We held meetings throughout the summer. Um, and what you'll, uh, for, also for those of you, uh, at home, this document is available on the JFAC website. It's also available in today's, uh, in today's, uh, JFAC, uh, packet. Uh, you'll notice on page two is a table. You'll notice on Page 2 is a table of contents. I would draw your attention to the fact that the recommendations are divided between system-wide recommendations, community service recommendations, reentry, community corrections, diversity, equity, inclusion, treatment, and the justice complex recommendations. Table 1, the summary recommendations begins on Page 8 and is a good way to see all the recommendations all at once. Before I turn it over for questions, I do want to issue a few thanks, particularly to Courtney Mosher and Kim Shell, who really did a lot of work on this, and also to all the members of JFAC, Beverly Callender Anderson, Penny Githens, Linda Grove Paul, John Hamilton, Misty James, Isabel Piedmont Smith, Ruben Marte and his staff, Melanie Veslage, April Wilson, and Karen Renbeck, as well as to all of you here on the county council. I will note that this report is the final document that'll be issued from this body, unless the council directs differently. And I will draw your attention to the next steps, which is Item Number, or Recommendation Number 2, which reads that "To not lose progress on non-architectural recommendations from this report, former JFAC voting members should bring quarterly updates to public meetings of the Monroe County Council until such time as the president of that body considers the updates to be superfluous. In the future, this work could be taken on by another office found in Recommendation 16." So there will be quarterly updates to you all. Most importantly, I think a lot of these recommendations are going to be helpful in the scope of justice work that goes beyond the construction of a jail and working with an architect. And it really highlights a lot of the collaboration that we can be doing as a council with our colleagues in the courts, the Board of Commissioners, the Sheriff's Department, the Prosecutor's Office, the Public Defender's Office, and more. And so I think at this point, without belaboring this report, which I think many of you watched the meetings, I'll just open it for questions if you have any.
Thank you, Counselor Iverson. Counselor McKim?
Yes. Thank you very much for all of the work that committee members put into this. And I do look forward to reading it in detail when I get home. But my question is, I guess, of all the recommendations, how many, if any of them, are already either part of the budget that we discussed or already programmed through ARPA or through some other revenue source? Basically, how many are already in flight?
There are probably three or four that we've already heard. Those are going to be Sheriff Marte's position requests. So those are the ones that we've heard. I think everything else is going to be new to us. I'm just flipping through here. I don't see, we have heard about Item Number 11, the IRAX program, from the Commissioners, but I don't think that's part of the budget. Yeah, I think, you know, just looking at it right now, I think the only ones are the sheriff's positions.
What, can you tell us, tell us what recommendation numbers those are?
Yes. We are looking at Recommendation Number 10. That is the reentry case manager. We are looking at Recommendation Number...
26?
26, which is the mental health professional. We're looking at Number 27, which is the SUD counselor in the jail. And I think...
There's a Recommendation 33.
33, yeah, which is the GL Programs Professional.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Counselor Deckard?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I would like time to look at this fully, and I'd like that in honor of the work that you all did. This is not easy. In fact, I don't think I've ever seen a local anything produce a report that comprehensive and that many pages with that much thought. And I know that the public hearings that you did, and I think that's remarkable.
It's just...
It's amazing.
Really, really good.
And I also want to say, the first system-wide recommendation you have calls for cooperation from the former members with other entities. And I love that that was led off with. We already know the problems that we're going to have in this process. We already know because every 33 seconds, we get a new wrinkle that makes this even more difficult than it was. But we're not kicking the can down the road. And I just want to say that I think that that spirit of cooperation, which we're not perfect on by any stretch, that is the only thing that our local officials should focus and meditate on. And by that, I mean every single one of us. We have got to get to an era where that is our lead and not our last. And I appreciate that sentiment being in here because it will take that to get it done. Former Commissioner Charlotte Zietlow, who has talked to me about this building that we're in and saving it, which created the present building, which we're now trying to figure out, she has talked repeatedly about the collaboration, cooperation. And when I look at that first line, I think, you know what, there's some wisdom in the past. So I just want to thank you all for doing that. I know that everyone's going to be diving through this, reading it, and I appreciate that extremely much.
Thank you, Counselor Deckard. Indeed, collaboration is a must. If we're going to succeed in the law of the goals that this community has set before us, we have to collaborate with our partners across the county. I will address one thing about these recommendations. Is it in no way obligates the council to act in any timeline or dollar amount. Council makes those decisions. So take as much time as you all need to take this home and read. Take, you know, make sure you read it all, ask us questions. But it really truly is the actions of the council that will drive this forward.
Counselor Munson?
I just want to extend my gratitude to the three members of this council who took this extra work onto their shoulders and who insisted on a collaborative approach like we all thought we should have. And I have looked at many reports and studies, series of recommendations, planning documents, et cetera, over the years. Many of them produced by high-priced consultants. And this work by our very own people who know us best is going to serve us better than anything that could have been brought in and provided to us. This is provided by us, led by Peter Iverson, Kate Wiltz, and Jennifer Crossley. So thank you.
Well, that was very kind. I would just like to make sure that we point out that Peter Iverson was the administrative chair for this group. And by that, I mean, we rotated who chaired the individual meetings. And because there were only three of us as the voting members, we could not, without violating open-door law, have conversations about any of these topics. Period. Outside of the meetings. That is a challenging work environment. And Peter worked very closely with Courtney Mosher in our office to capture every single meeting, what we had gone over, and get that down and share it. And I just want to say thank you because it reflects great on the rest of us. And I'm very proud of the work. But I also want to recognize that this, this is your heart and soul right here. So I wanted to make sure to mention that, and I very much appreciate your dedication to it. I will make sure that we put JFAC discussions on our future agenda. And we will be sure to discuss these in an orderly fashion. You said, "Take as much time as you need," and I don't think that's what we'll do. We'll put a little deadline on you, but shortly, because we do need to be discussing these. Any other questions or comments? All right. All right, then. Thank you again. So let's go ahead and move to Item 16 on our agenda, which is the Continued Budget Discussion. The 2024 budget will not die. No. This is what happens when we put these things later in the meeting.
Yeah, can we schedule a special meeting on Thursday, maybe?
Oh, my gosh.
That's the wrong thing to say.
That look. A whole special meeting.
Wow.
Meetings will continue daily until morale improves.
Right? Okay. So at our last budget session, we moved forward with an 8.5% COLA increase. We're going to talk about that and some other things this evening. But first, I was hoping to be able to take a look at some updated numbers regarding the COLA changes. And before, Ms. Shell, before you share that, I want to just say thank you to all of the department heads and financial managers there who, since our last meeting, I know worked your patooties off, that's a term, trying to get us the information we need. And it's very much appreciated, and I realize it was a heavy ask. So please know that we recognize that we asked a lot, and we really do appreciate it. Ms. Kim?
Well, I was going to try and show where we were at in our draft 4B, but I can't get to Dropbox, so...
All right.
Can I ask Counselor McKim to do that?
Yeah, I'll have to get into Zoom. Hang, give me a second. Sorry.
I've got it if you want it.
Are you already in Zoom? Yeah, then let him, because it'll take, it would take me a couple minutes.
Here comes, there it is. Let's zoom in a little bit.
Now, Peter, you can be the Jeff.
No. No one can be Jeff.
No one can be the Jeff.
All right. Jeff, tell me where you want me to go.
Oh, well, I hadn't actually, I mean, I just saw this, you know, this updated version right before the meeting started. Michelle had just updated this afternoon. I guess, let me, my quick remarks then, yeah, go over, scroll over a little bit more. Okay. So you see that number under frozen levy, the 1 point, about $1.5 million. So that's where, that's essentially the deficit on paper of where we are with the frozen levy, the general fund and all the other funds in the frozen levy. You know, in, in the past, we've generally had reversions of more than a million, or more than $2 million. So, you know, I, at the end of the year is a $1.5 million deficit. It's probably going to wind up being a small surplus by the end of the year. But some of that will depend on, you know, on kind of our discipline in adding things throughout the year. We added a lot this year, which is why we're not really, we're probably not going to have much reversions at all for 2023. I mean, first of all, we added the, of course, the collective bargaining unit salaries for the Sheriff's Department and jail. We've added, you know, position in the Surveyor's Office. I know there are a lot of other things we've, we've added. So, you know, I think that if we're going to go with this level of deficit on paper, we're going to need to make sure that we're really kind of hold the line on additional appropriations, new positions, new requests during the year. That, so that said, though, if you look under, for example, General, the operating balance, even with that level of deficit, it's still a good operating balance. It's more than, you know, than the auditor's offices has recommended for that fund. So, you know, we're still in a, we're still in a good posi, at least, let me put it this way. We have enough runway that if we're wrong for one year, we're able to, we're able to correct. Or, and correct, you know, correct doesn't mean cutting employee salaries, of course. It might mean a lesser COLA next year if, if things turn out to be bad. I did update the... Sorry, it's easier if I just look at it on my own, just... I did update on the additional appropriations, the ones that we just, that we did tonight, because, you know, we did a fairly substantial additional appropriation. I wanted to make sure that, that amount of cash was captured somewhere. We did...
So that shows in the operating balance?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Exactly. We did not, I don't believe, and I asked Bree, but I didn't get an answer yet. Michelle, you don't, this doesn't include that extra cash that we're getting in FEMA reinforcements, does it?
No, it does not.
Okay. Do you remember what that number was that?
It was around 600 something.
Oh, actually. Yeah. Bree literally just texted me now and said, "Yeah, it's not represented on here." And, yeah, okay. So it doesn't, in other words, it doesn't include that additional cash.
Kim said 600,000.
And what, what is it from?
It was FEMA.
FEMA.
FEMA. Yes, we've been asking for it politely for several years, but it's from 2021. But it was finally deposited, which goes straight into General. Is that what?
I don't think it's actually been deposited yet. I think we've just received word.
Received notice that it's coming.
The check's in the mail, or it's under final review or under another review.
I can't spend it yet. Just kidding.
Yeah, exactly. And then, and so that's for the frozen levy. Then we also had the Public Safety Lit, which is right now budgeted on paper deficit of about 300, less than $300,000, but still a substantial operating balance of 57%. So, you know, it's, depending on what we do tonight, if we... We're close to the edge, but not, you know, it seems to me that we're in pretty good shape. Now, we do remember that for this year, we cut down the health levy to zero. And if you look at that, yeah, if you go back to health, what that shows is basically with zero levy at all, we have a deficit of almost $500,000 in health. That represents the difference between the mandatory amount that we are going to have to be appropriating from now on out of this fund in order to qualify for the state, the state funding. The difference between that and the miscellaneous revenues, because the Health Department generates a lot of user fees. So we have to remember that next year, you know, we can only burn down that, that cash balance so long. So at some point, we are going to have to put some more, you know, maybe, maybe $500,000, for example, of levy back in health. Those are my quick observations, I guess.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Are there, well, Ms. Shell, do you have anything further to add in terms of an update?
No, not at this time with regards to that.
Okay, great. Thanks.
And this does include all the 8.5% COLAs that we actually did already approve, but none of the additional ones that we might discuss.
Yes, it does. It includes all of the salaries with regards to the 8.5. Everybody was able to get that information in, and that's reflected in those totals.
Okay.
The only thing that's not reflected is the elected officials and chief deputies, along with anything that you might decide with regards to the SO attorneys, probation officers, blah, blah, blah.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you still work?
Okay. Questions?
Oh, Molly also mentioned that there might be adjustments with COLA on contracts.
Some of the contracts have a COLA clause in them, like the ASI contract. And then some other contracts, the health officer in particularly, does not have a COLA clause, but they would like to add a COLA clause, and we normally would add such.
Okay. Right, you were asking about the
Okay.
the justice contract.
Yeah, okay. Are there questions or comments from council members, Councilor Deckard?
One thing I appreciated in our last meeting is sort of the sentiment we reflected on that strong interest in that eight and a half percent. Uh, eight and a half percent in any other year would seem like a large number and it is a large number. It does, it does, it's not even close to the COLA, uh, in my job, I saw the last couple of years that said that I'm not in charge of that, we are in charge of this. And, um, as Counselor McKim was talking, particularly about those FEMA dollars that we're waiting on, that reminds me very starkly that when we were dealing with the budget in twenty, uh, twenty-one, we were doing it in the combines of our homes and when we left our homes, we had masks on. We, as a country, as a community, as a state, have been through an awful time in the last four to five years. Uh, it's sometimes it's getting so long, I can't remember exactly how many, what, four years now? And the tail end of that dragon, which I've kinda consistently said, has been this time inflation that has hit people in different ways, it's doing messy things with us. And as we frankly have heard from our folks, it is hard to live in this good community and afford it. And that's something every one of us has to wear and figure out. And I'm not sure where those solutions all are, but part of that is figuring out what we do on this year in the end of that kinda tough time where the dr, tail of the dragon has kinda whipped through to make cost of living and inflation a discussion point, right? Whether we deal with it or not, our folks are dealing with it. And so I look at the money, I go into my taxpayer hat, who I work for, looking at the money, I don't panic, I'm not sweating. I do think the same stewardship that our elected officials and department heads used to get us to this moment in the budget is the same we'll have to use in the remaining year, just like Counselor McKim said. It may not be easy and in a year, when we look at all this or whoever's in these seats in a year, they may have to make different decisions, but for now, to me, that eight point five and a little bit more, the other things we have here, makes sense to me to move forward.
Yeah. Well said. Other comments on the updates that have been presented or questions? Councilor Munson?
So the word COLA in Spanish means tail. And, um, we know that sometimes the tail wags the dog. I have, um, I've felt a little bit of trepidation about the eight point five percent amount because I'm thinking that we don't have any good sense about the likely impact of this big, this substantial boost to salaries, what this will mean in future years. And we do not have, as a council, uh, the benefit of the kind of financial advice that we could have. And so, um, it's not too late to bring this up to you all. I'd say early on in our next year, and I think it will be most of us still here sitting in these seats. I think we should be planning for this as part of our twenty twenty-five budget deliberations and to get a five or seven-year forecast. I mean, it's out there, we need, we need to ask the questions and, and get better information, so. That said, I am, um, I'm very grateful to all the department heads and their collaborative approach to helping the county find the resources to come up with the COLA that people are very desperate to have this year. Thanks.
Counselor McKim?
Well, and remember, we have a contract with FSG to do that, that kind of analysis and in particular, I know that Mr. Garitas from FSG
And I didn't know that.
Has, well, I mean, we've, we've approved that, that appropriation before and, uh, you know, he, he, I mean, a lot of it was focused on, um, yeah, and, and I don't remember the other, yeah, bond, uh, bond documents and that sort of thing. But, you know, he has specifically said we need to have a three-year budget.
Okay.
And that everybody needs to have a three-year budget. So, I, I agree, we, we need a much more active engagement with, with, with Mr. Garitas and, and his analysis. And I think it's just, it's just one of those things when we have, you know, every single meeting is, is already four or five hours long. You know, it's hard to even imagine taking on a major ta, another major task, but I, I think we do need to, um, keep updating that, uh, you know, ke, keep updating, keep working with him to update those analyses. But I am very glad that everybody came together to support an eight point five percent COLA. I'm, I'm glad we were able to get there and I certainly strongly support a budget that includes that for our employees.
Any other comments or questions? Alright, um, what I'd like to do next is, um, discuss a list of possible changes, um, that we could make. And, um, knowing that we have ambiguous, um, numbers, I, I shouldn't say that, that's not very kind, sorry. It's, we, the numbers that we have, um, are as good as we can get them and, um, they may not engender a lot of confidence three to four years out, but that's not what they are. So, um, with that in mind, um, I want us to also, I want us to think about, I'm, I'm gonna tell you the list that I have and see if there are any other topics that you wanna discuss. But also, um, be thinking about what we just saw in terms of the update as well as, um, other uh, unrepresented savings like the FEMA miracle that landed on us last week. So, um, we did not specify a, um, specific, we did not specifically include elected officials in our eight point five percent. And that created some, uh, questions, so I directed everybody to not include them. And, did I do that? I'm so tired right now. And, um, and that impacts the chief deputies. So, elected officials and chief deputies, um, is one, one thing we need to talk about. Um, we have also, um, left, I think, a little bit of confusion around probation officers and the fact that they have a, a state minimum, um, COLA and whether or not they were to be included. Um, so that's another topic I'd like to discuss. Also, the attorneys, um, who are in our public defenders and, and prosecutors' offices have come to us asking about a change from the thirty-five to forty in order to increase their salaries. So, that's three things, so I can't count anymore, doesn't engender confidence. Um, I had brought up the idea of an increase to the comment grid, just overall, to try to elevate those who, um, are most affected by inflation. Um, so that would consider that another one that I'd like to talk about. And then finally, during our WIS, um, just co, compensation review and that a couple of years ago, um, the, the WIS report did, um, point out that Monroe County is compensating its employees doubly for longevity and recommended, um, doing away with the annual longevity payments, suggesting that then we could use those to fund these types of other salary, um, related increases. So I would like to revisit that as well. And I have, uh, we have some ideas on all of this. I've asked, um, our administrator to provide information, I think, on almost every one of those. Are there other changes that we should discuss? Um, I'm happy to add to that lovely list.
Encompasses everything I've heard so far.
I think that's, I think that's.
Let's get going.
Yeah, let's get going.
Probably enough for the remaining eight minutes of the meeting.
We can do it in eight.
Snarky, that's what that is. Alright, um, order in which, would, is there, yes?
I, I would recommend that we, um, hold the elected official discussion to beyond the last on the agenda. Uh, that, no offense to the chief deputies, but, but we, we'll, we'll get there, but right now, I think we should focus on the others first.
Any other suggestions for the order in which we talk about things? Alright. Then I will determine the order. And I have to admit, the first thing I would like to talk about is longevity, simply because I think that if council is in favor of, of doing this, it is something that gives us more flexibility, um, may perhaps in some of the other areas. And, um, one, one thing that we, um, Michelle had suggested was that rather than just say, from here on out, we're not doing it anymore, which if I recollect, um, WIS had indicated saves us a million or, a, a million or one point five, I can't remember from the report, dollars per year. So that's the type of impact we're talking about. I, I feel like that's a little bit of a, a pulling the rug out from under employees and, um, would suggest that perhaps maybe we amend the salary ordinance to indicate that anyone hired starting twenty twenty-four does not have that included in their, um, compensation package. So it's a phased out over time just by attrition. Obviously, it won't save a million dollars in the first year by any stretch, but ultimately, it gets us more in line with what, um, WIS felt was a better practice. And I will point out that that is because we already have built in increases at certain steps in the three-year and eight-year type of, um, bumps in our grids. I'm open to suggestions and conversation, criticism? Yes, I'll start with, uh, Mr. Iverson and then Mr. McKim.
So just for clarity, the, the proposal you just made means that no existing Monroe County employee would lose their longevity?
As long as they stayed employed with us, correct?
Okay.
I just, I'll clarify that, um, if an employee leaves employment with Monroe County and then comes back, that longevity starts over. So then that's considered like a rehire or a new hire? Then that, they would also no longer, if you go with the, the, the two thousand and four. So if anybody's rehired, they won't come back and get longevity.
But, but you, the, you're, the number of years of service still count towards your step increases?
Correct, you do have that in place.
And the step increases would stay.
Okay, so, uh, regarding just longevity, if a person changes, uh, employment from one department to another department, do they lose their longevity?
No, as long as there's not a break.
In service.
In service.
Okay.
You're moving from one place to another, no break, you keep your longevity.
Okay.
But if, if there's a break of any kind, even one day, you lose it.
Man, she drives a hard car.
I, I'm just gonna say, I support this a hundred percent. I, I mean, WIS has been clear that we are double paying for longevity. Uh, and I, I know that President Wilts has wanted to take a, a whack at this for, for a while and I, I, we probably should have done it last year, but, that, you know, we, we, the county has to be able to make changes like this to fix mistakes, um, or to fix old practices that are no longer beneficial. And this is a, a fair way, a way of doing it that doesn't disadvantage any current, uh, employees in any way. Nobody has a, uh, you know, future employees who don't exist now don't have a, a, a right to that compensation.
Right.
It's, whenever we hear from employees about their salaries, they don't seem to even, even include, um, the longevity. It's like it doesn't count, um, as compensation from the county. Yeah, I think eliminating it for future employees, uh, is exactly the right way to do it. And there are, you know, plenty of examples of, of organizations that have to change, make, make structural changes in their compensation system. And so they'll have people who are under the old rules and people who are on the new rules. You know, federal government has major, major distinction with respect to pensions. If you were hired before date X, you get a certain kind of pension benefit and if you're hired after date X, you get something that isn't as good.
And we see that with the Fire Protection District.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Nineteen seventy-five.
Counselor Deckard?
I, I will admit, um, a few years back when this kinda surfaces as a potential, I, I'll admit, I'm, I'm one of the ones that was a little bit more queasy, I think, than others on this. Um, I always worry when money is coming out, when you're putting money in and money's coming out the other side, I always worry that you end up negating your work. What I will say is, um, I've heard the kinda call for this and I do think if we would move forward, I, I wanna get a little better sense of, uh, myself and I'm always open for what folks think. But if we did move forward, I like the notion of the phase in. And I like that notion because it does not penalize current, uh, of, current occupants. Here's what I will say, and I can't speak for county employees, nor would they hire me to do so. I think that means those of us in these seats, whoever that is through the years, have to be, uh, Johnny on the spot with watching COLA and doing those things so that, so that we don't get back into an issue or, or what have you. I always hear lots of theories out there, how, why, why pay is the way it is? And I, I don't know, I wasn't here for all those years, but we have got to make that as part of a, county employment has got to be a value that we hold with our dollars and I think we're doing that. We've, and I'd argue we've done that for a bit. I, I don't always believe that, we're not, but I wanna make sure that a phase in would not penalize anyone if we did this.
That is my intent, just, um, you look like you have a question, Ms. Turner King.
Well, I'm gonna complicate the longevity conversation, I think. So you have, sorry, you have the general, you have county employees and then you have the collective bargaining agreement employees and some of those agreements provide for payment of longevity. So would the idea be that the same phase-out policy be applied to the collective bargaining agreements?
I don't know, simply because I don't know if we can. I mean, I, I guess, where are, I mean, I, cause I, we don't negotiate those, so.
We are in the process of negotiating them now, so if you wanted to try to implement a change, now would be the time to propose it.
I would say propose it. Go right ahead.
I, I would just add, I, I think when you have collective bargaining, one side says this, the other side says this, and they negotiate everything from coffee mugs to COLAs. And I think that that becomes part of the discussion. That doesn't mean anybody's gonna say yes to it or no to it, but it would, could be part of the discussion, certainly. Among many other things.
Just to make your job easier, please do, please bring that up and put that into the negotiations. Counselor McKim?
Yeah, I mean, it also, it's, it's not, in this case, in the case of the negotiations with the collective bargaining units, it wouldn't about, be about reducing their amount of compensation. It would simply, what we wanna do is pay the salary, which is what people seem, tell us that they value, is that, that wage, uh, is their bi-weekly, uh, bi-weekly wage that they get, their paycheck. That's what we really need to put, make sure we put that money into. You know, we're not si, trying to do this to, I don't know, spend it on something else, on courthouse beautification. You know, we're not si- trying to do this to, I don't know, spend it on something else, on courthouse beautification. This is about making, you know, making sure that we can fund, uh, fund employee raises.
Yep.
And yeah, the immediate effect would be minimal, but over time.
So what's the next step?
So I think that we would need to instruct our staff to write an amendment to the salary ordinance.
That is correct.
Well, not an amendment, right? We haven't even passed the first, just included in the draft salary.
Yes, it'll be included in the twenty twenty-four.
Ah, that's right.
Do we need to have a motion on this and for that instruction?
I think that would be more clear if, and I would prefer that.
I would too.
I would entertain a motion. I can make a motion, I guess.
Go ahead, go.
Um, counsel, I move that we move forward with including in the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance the phased out elimination of the longevity structure that currently exists, beginning with anyone hired in twenty twenty-four.
Beginning January one.
January one. Any just further discussion or questions? All right, um.
I, I will say on this, um, I'm okay with the draft saying that move forward. Um, I will probably know what yes on this until I see it, but if it's in the salary ordinance and we gather information, I will then review that with everything else and make a final decision. So if you're a no, that's what that is for me. Again, I'm trying to figure out more, but again, I appreciate the sentiment expressed and the effort, because I know our chairs worked hard on trying to figure this out for some time.
All right, any other comments or questions? Let's do a roll call vote then.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
No.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wilts?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed five to one.
Thank you. Okay, so let's, um, I gotta keep track here of what I've done. Next, should we go, let's go ahead and discuss the, um, the attorneys. I think that's a, a pretty big, um, fiscal impact and I know that we have some information. Our office staff has pulled together so many different tables and configurations of, of information for us in the past week that I don't know when this was sent, probably sometime today. Okay. And if you could share that on the screen, that would be lovely. Um, if you could make it a little bigger and then orient, like just give us a little orientation through what we're seeing.
Okay.
And this is, this is in your e- email from you, Kim?
Yes.
Thanks.
Um, I was asked to put together a fiscal impact of moving thirty-five hour attorneys to forty hours. So, um, what you're seeing right here, did I do that? Yes. Hold on, I may have.
So.
Yes, so sorry, I have to, I've done so many things today. So yeah, so what happened is, um, the, the numbers that you are seeing where it says total employees were the ones that were under the thirty-five hours. So up here at the top, it says total employees right here.
Ah, employee total, got it.
Right, okay.
So there's a number of positions, number of people we have, yeah, in that part of the grid.
Right, that are an SO Attorney A. And so we have, uh, three at one year, six at three year and one at eight year. Now, this does include, um, the supplemental, the pu- public defender supplemental numbers as well as the child support. I just, because, um, I just really didn't have time to pull everything out and create separate. So this is just everybody all at once. Um, by moving everyone to forty hours, it kind, it kind of gives you the, um, the target area of hiring people or bringing them in at the base rate of at least the seventy uh, to the eighty. So you can see at an SO Attorney A, they can come in at seventy-four thousand, one eleven, or if you're an SO Attorney B, they would come in at eighty-five. Uh, we currently do not have anyone in those spots.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, for the SO Attorney C, we only have one person and that is the prosecuting, um, the first deputy, I believe, in the prosecutor's office. Well, this does not include the four forty-hour legal department. This is just strictly the thirty-five moving to forty numbers.
Because those, those four attorneys are already part of our, our four B analysis.
Correct. So when you get down here at the bottom, it shows you, um, the entire, the fiscal impact of the total moving from thirty-five to forty. That number in the pink also includes the FICA.
So it includes the eight and a half percent cola, the, um, move from thirty-five to forty, including FICA and PERF. So this is the overall impact. Now what it might, it might be inflated.
Right.
Um, in terms of impact because of still containing the child support and.
The public defender supplemental.
And those who are included, so that would still be an impact, but yeah, that's just an impact to a different fund.
Right, to a different fund.
So child support, we are not considering those because.
The elected official asked, stated that, uh, those, um, I think it's four positions didn't really need to be moved to the forty.
Okay. Um, are there questions or comments on the information that's been presented? Yes.
I guess, I mean, it is a lot of money. I, I wish that there was some way in those two departments that we could offset some of that, uh, some of that additional expense, but it, I gotta say, the, the whole idea of eighty, of thirty-five hour a week exempt employees already seems like it's potential to be abusive because we know that a lot of these professionals have such a heavy caseload that, that they're gonna, they have to be able to work at least forty hours a week to get their work done.
Let's not debate that again, cause yeah, that whole thing. Of course they're working that much. Um, Counselor Iverson?
Yeah, you know, as, as you look at the shift, the, the impact this would have on, um, approximate annual salary increases, moving the lowest, uh, SO attorney from sixty-eight thousand to seventy-four thousand uh, for Attorney A, uh, Attorney B from seventy-eight thousand to eighty-five thousand, and Attorney C from eighty-three thousand to ninety thousand. That, I think, is, is successfully getting us closer to the IPAC data that we're seeing, the Indiana Prosecutor, uh, Association, of what other counties are paying, uh, that they're advertising right now. Now, does this put us ahead of the PAC?
No.
No, but this gets us closer to where we were and with the, the problems we're having attracting uh, qualified attorneys, this in my mind is gonna help.
Counselor McKim?
I'm gonna say this also just fixes an inequity between county attorneys and the county legal department and attorneys in the, uh, in the prosecutor's and public defender's office. I mean, right now we have a system where, um, it, it's easy for county legal, uh, to poach somebody who works in the public defender or as, as we have learned ourselves.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Deckard?
One thing that appeals to me about this, um, and I think it is represented in how we've seen both of those departments conduct themselves, is that it's a request for both the public defender's office and for the prosecutor. We have both sides of that, which we, I said in the last meeting, it's a value to the community. Incidentally, looking at this final number from Michelle, I'm kind of impressed by that number and proud of myself. Peter Iverson, Counselor Iverson and I were meeting with the prosecutor. I did some napkin figuring and I actually was over by about forty thousand on the estimate, but that came under what I thought. To me, we look at numbers all day and every dollar has a value for the people of this county. But when I look at that and I look what we're asking of these individuals and the commitment to both sides of that, to me, this falls within sort of that era, era, erring on caution with our budget and putting this in there. Um, we're just gonna have to be candid about these things because our departments are living in that candor. And to me, that number, again, it's not panicking me. Um, we may get down the road and have to do other things. And like Counselor McKim said, that doesn't mean that we start selling the tables and releasing people from duty. It just means we gotta figure out other things as we do this, but to me it makes sense and I would like to see us move forward with this.
Any other comments or questions? Well, I would very much like to move forward with this as well, um, and given the attitude that, that you've expressed and, and Counselor McKim has expressed as well, is that we have to be flexible. I suppose I'm willing to, to give it a shot. Um, we certainly have the money to do it. It's just, the question is, do we have the future money to continue doing it? And, you know, I, I will be an optimist and hope that we do. Um, I would entertain a, a motion.
Counselors, I hope I do this right. You know me and scripts. Counselors, I move to change our attorney levels from thirty-five to forty hours.
Second. As, as outlined in the grids displayed on the screen.
Yes, just what she said, that's what I meant.
Just to clarify, this is also, so this would be a change both with the budget and with the salary.
Yes.
So to be clear in my motion, as that affects the salary grid, as that affects our budget.
Yes. And that pink number is the bottom line.
Well, minus the child support, um, folks, yeah. That was a really delightful motion and did someone second it?
You know me, we'd have to have that script.
Miss Crossley seconded it, seconded it, did it. All right, is there further comment or discussion on this? Okay. Vets, go ahead and have a roll call vote on making this, uh, happen.
Okay, so I'm just gonna restate, just so we're all on the same page, that we're going to move forward with, uh, all attorneys going to thirty-five to forty hours except for the child sup- uh, child support, um, as well as putting it in the budget for twenty twenty-four and the salary ordinance.
That's what I said, I think.
For twenty twenty-four.
For twenty twenty-four, yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wilts?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. All right. Let us now talk about probation officers.
Let's do.
Um, so there were some folks, I think, either, um, in our staff, uh, or maybe on council as well, who just felt like maybe the, the, we weren't really sure what we had done because we didn't explicitly say. Um, and I instructed the probation office to not include the, an increase above the state mandated cola that would bring the probation officers to the eight point five. So that's what we have been looking at, our numbers that do not include probation officers at eight point five. It includes probation officers at seven point eight? Six point one? Okay. Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. A six point one percent increase is what is currently reflected?
Yes.
In the budget?
That's because the state went from their base
Yes.
of three point three three and gave the seven point eight. We then, or council then gave an additional one point six seven. So that's where that six point one comes from.
Yes.
Right.
For last.
Yep. Okay. So in the future, if we, this is gonna keep happening?
It, yeah, it possibly could keep happening every year.
All right.
Or they could get more.
Or they could get more than, than the county.
And they have gotten more than others.
Yes, in past years.
All right, brief history, there you go. So the, the, I, the question is, what direction do I give, um, community corrections about the probation officers and the cola? Mr. McKim?
First of all, Michelle, I, I don't, it may have been, um, the probation department probably that provided the, uh, fiscal impact. Is it possible to put that up on the screen so we can all see? So I'm just gonna say, you know, from, from my perspective, I, I realize that, well, as long as I've been on the county council, um, you know, we've always had this kind of made, we've kind of treated them differently, the probation officers differently because they have that state mandated minimum. And, you know, I, it's become such a habit that it just seems like it's the natural order of things, but I don't, I don't think it is. I, the, the more I think about it, I, I just don't think that there's a, a, uh, you know, a really, a, a philosophically defensible, uh, reason to treat them, uh, differently from other county employees just because the state has a particular condition. I mean, the state also has conditions on the public defender and prosecutor's office and they don't.
Does lots of things.
Yeah, the state that lot, does, has lots of unfunded mandates that we like, or that we don't like, rather. And so I, yeah, I, I'm more and more to the point that I just, I can't see a principled reason to, that, that they shouldn't get the same county, the same cost of living adjustment.
There you go. Okay.
And thank you whoever put this together. It's, it's very clear. Was that Troy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, could, okay, so I need to see that.
I'm driving, so tell me which way to go.
Do you wanna describe what we're seeing? I just feel like somebody should say things out loud for just the good of the order. I'm, I feel better when we do that.
Do we want them to help us with that at all? They supplied the number?
I think we're okay. I just feel like we should say it out loud. So across all the funds on the left-hand side, do you wanna say it? Do I wanna say?
Do you want a motion?
I would like a description of what we're looking at. I feel like that's
I think county government
more accessible. I feel like that's more accessible.
Should provide a COLA amount to probation officers to make them as close as possible to the COLA amount paid to other county employees. I do know we voted to do this last year because probation was seriously challenged by having a great number of vacancies. And they knew that the additional amount would help them attract more applicants. This was a problem for other departments too that we made adjustments for. And this year, the state came through with a higher-than-average cost of living adjustment, which means that the effective amount that would be needed from the county coffers to bring them up to the level of other county employees would be not eight point five percent, but a smaller amount. And the numbers are available for you. Did that help? Did that confuse? Both?
Okay, all right. Counselor McKim, did you?
Well, since you wanted to talk about the fiscal impact, I guess I do have a question just looking at these numbers now. The first three rows make sense. Forty-nine, forty-nine thousand in county general, twenty-two thousand six hundred in special purpose lit, and about thirty-eight hundred dollars in public safety lit.
And then zeros in the last three where there are no full-time POs.
Yeah, but what about the court alcohol drug services, one PO? The total's out to forty-three thousand dollars, that can't be right.
Please.
Please come on up, help us out.
He did, he did this.
Do I need to zoom in even more?
Thank you.
Yeah. Good evening, so exactly what Jeff said, the first three are all the tax-based funds. And it kind of lists the full-time POs in each one of those funds. The next one, the court alcohol and drug services fund, there's just one PO in that fund. But currently, the person who is in there only has about one year of experience, right? So we are very, very fortunate to be able to hire somebody who's coming into Indiana from Arizona, has over twenty years' experience working with mental health cases, sex offenders, those types of folks, that we really, really wanted to hire him. He's moving to this area, he wanted a job with us, he's heard about our department, and really wanted to work for us. So very fortunate to be able to hire him, he starts next week. And so I needed a spot to put him. In looking at kind of financial projections and the court alcohol and drug services fund, that money, or that fund has been building a little bit over the past several years because of adjustments the council has made for us in the past, and can easily sustain his salary in there as a twenty-plus-year experience PO over the next few years. So that's where I kind of stuck him, and that's why you see such a huge amount. No, it's not. It's not the entire salary, it's just kind of the difference between what, who's in there now, plus the eight and a half percent of what it would be with a twenty-year person next year.
Got it.
So that's why it's so high.
But it's not solely the impact of the eight point five.
No, it's not. But that's how much is needed as far as a budget change. Because you guys have already approved what was in there, anticipating who I have in there now.
So this is an additional request to?
And that's my bad, I probably should have looked at it a little bit differently.
Did you put an extra thing in there, were you?
I know. Okay, I understand now.
Certainly didn't want to move him into a county general fund or a tax-based fund if I didn't need to because that would increase those numbers quite a bit. I know you're trying to keep those down as much as possible.
So on those tax funds, those are accurate?
With the people who are in there currently.
Why are two of them red?
I'm sorry?
Why are two of them red?
Because, those were marked as red because those are probably the ones that are most important to you, I would assume. Yeah, and the special purpose lit, we know that's for the juvenile services.
It's okay.
That tends to have, you know, a pretty healthy cash balance in there.
That's the best answer that it could be.
No, go ahead.
So the court alcohol drug services increase, would that need to be handled as part of our 2024 budget decision? Or is that, can that be handled at some other date?
Yeah, so I would need to be able to include that in the 2024 budget. Like, I have enough money in that fund now to move money around to cover the salaries through the rest of the year. I just need to add him in for the 2024.
So otherwise, you would come for an additional at some point?
I would need to next year after the budget is passed, but if we can do that.
We can do that, we can do that next year too.
Or this year.
Or whatever.
So?
But we don't have to do it as part of this particular budget process.
We could, why not?
Yeah, why wouldn't we want to?
I would say, yes, we do because we already have it in there and might as well make the adjustments. That way, he doesn't have to come back for an additional.
I mean, if we know about it, it makes sense. But that's, it doesn't have to be a part of this motion decision. It can be, it sounds like it's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine.
And that's my fault, I probably should have put that in a different kind of column or category because of the difference in personnel. The project income fund right below that has sixteen POs in it, but remember, that's a split fund. That's one that we use to supplement our grants from the Department of Correction as well as from the Indiana Office of Court Services. Because of the turnover that we've had with different people leaving that had more experience, hiring newer folks, I've been able to kind of move people around in different lines that might have, you know, grant funding out of a line of fifty thousand dollars versus forty thousand. I can move, you know, more senior officers in that line to actually save a decent amount of money. In addition, you know, with that IOCS grant for the pre-trial services program, where they gave us about a hundred thousand dollars more this year. So part of that funding, you know, that was for just the public defender, but they also gave us additional money for the probation part of the funding. So, and we did have turnover in our pre-trial services program, so is able to put a more experienced officer in the additional amount that they gave us, and then put a less experienced officer up that would take some of the project income. So it's just kind of moving people around to save as much money as possible. So that's why you're not seeing as great of an impact in the project income fund.
Thank you for doing all of that. It's appreciated. So it looks like the, the impact total then is approximately eighty-some thousand because, I mean, and I'm not excluding the fact that you've hired a new person, but including the COLA for that person. So it's just one person, so it'd be like?
It's about seventy to seventy-five thousand in the tax-based funds, is what the impact would be.
Right, yeah, yeah, okay. So seventy, seventy-five thousand, that's what we got. Pales in comparison to some of the things we've recently done, just saying that. Anybody have any comments? Yes, sir.
The anecdotal sentiment that I have picked up from the folks in probation when we did what we did last year is that it has been positive for morale and treatment, et cetera. And this, that number that has now vanished, but that's okay, I would say. You're fine, you're fine. That number, to me, reflects that. I think it is important. I know there's a lot of history with what the state did and state did not do. But we have to be really careful with our folks because they're here with us among their neighbors, their colleagues, taken care of, our neighbors and colleagues. And we've talked a lot about treatment, we've talked a lot about alternatives and options and everything under the sun. And we do have to be very knowledgeable that the probation department is a massive part of that and lead the way. And I just like parity between our folks. Does that mean we always have it? My gosh, no, and everybody will remind me when I walk out that door ninety ways, we've not done that somehow tonight. But to me, trying to treat folks like they're part of our county employee family who administer part of state laws, to me, that's the goal. And I like that we did that last year, and I would like to see us do that again this year.
Other discussion or questions?
I was just going to say briefly, I was one of the ones last week that thought that this included the probation office. So that was me. But I appreciate the discussions, just as Counselor Deckard was saying. I do think that we need to make sure that we are treating them all as the same as other departments here. And again, with the boost of what we did last year, plus hopefully what we will do again for them for the upcoming year, this will continue to be on the up and up. And the vacancies that they continue to have, this could hopefully give them some type of incentive to get some of these positions filled, so they can do the goodwill of the department.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion, I don't believe we'd have one yet.
I'll do my best. Counsel, in subsequent budget and salary grid preparation, I would ask that we prepare grids to reflect an eight point five percent increase for probation personnel.
Second.
I'm waiting to make sure that staff looks like they've got that. Do you need more information? Excellent. Are there any other questions or comments? I have to say that what's most convincing to me is the, the idea of treating everyone as though they're part of the same group, you know? And that does speak to me quite a bit. When you're ready, we'll have a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Excellent, I'm sorry, I'm sorry that you've had to do a little extra. I mean, I just didn't want to make a mistake on saying yes when I didn't know, but. Cool, all right, cool. That brings us to the discussion about the comment positions and whether or not there's interest in an additional increase to those in that category. Classification, that's what it's called. I had, last week, I think, thrown out there, like, what if we boosted every comment in the county a thousand dollars? And the thinking behind this is that those are, in general, that's our lowest paid grid. So the impacts of inflation hit that grid hardest, and the people who are paid by that grid. So that was where I was coming from, I just threw out a number. I believe Michelle said there were a hundred and forty current employees in that grid. So you can imagine, it would be a hundred and forty thousand dollars, that's a lot, that's a lot. I asked her to give us a little bit more information because obviously, it's not an all or nothing. And in my opinion, it's worth talking about whether or not there's, we want to do something. Now, I think just said, let's treat everybody, you know, I did not say fairly equally. I said as part of the same group because I feel like this is supporting those who need the support most. That's the spirit in which I bring this. I recognize we have spent a lot of money this evening, but I still would like us to take a quick look at the impacts of, with FICA and PERF and that type of stuff included, something around that thousand-dollar level. I also had her plug in something at half that. And we could do, you know, less if you wanted. I'm really making a strong argument, aren't I? So are you able to share the grid, Michelle? Okay, so this is hot off the presses. And this shows the, very similar to what we had, we'd looked at in the other grids, shows the number of employees at each level. So the first box, first table is comment A, starting with their current salaries. We don't have any comment A's. I think that's good because they can be paid sixteen dollars an hour and under thirty thousand as their, you know, as their salary. And I would, I'm glad that we have employees who are paid more. Comment B is then the next grid, and as you can see, that the first section there shows that, for instance, in that lowest column, that's what that is on the grid, we have thirteen employees. And approximately annually, they're paid thirty-four thousand five hundred. If you were to bring them up then by eight point five percent, which we already know we're doing, that brings them to thirty-seven thousand. I tend to think in annual salaries, Ms. Shell prefers that I think in
Hourly.
Hourly, because that's how she bases the grids. I will try to switch here, but she converted my suggestion of a thousand to a flat increase of fifty-five cents per hour, which is the very bottom section there in kind of that dark blue. Above that, she has twenty-five cents an hour, which seems more reasonable perhaps to some. So you can see there, she has the subtotaled for the comment Bs underneath that table, what each spot along the grid would be, what the impact would be, by doing just the current eight and a half percent increase or an increase of twenty-five cents per hour versus fifty-five cents per hour. Goes down through comment Cs, and I believe there's a total at the bottom of this as well.
And what you're looking at are totals for the thirty-five-hour employees?
That might be helpful to know.
Well, what's the bottom line? I see some cells highlighting green, I want to make sure we understand.
There we go.
There you go. So that is the bottom line of what it would cost.
I know, right? So that's the impact of doing that. And for clarity, yeah, that's the number we've got, I
I don't know, how could that possibly be right?
I don't know.
It seems a little high.
I mean, wouldn't the impact of fifty-five cents be more than twice the impact of twenty-five cents?
That's what I couldn't figure out.
I did this quickly.
It does seem
It's counterintuitive.
It seems disproportionate to the one hundred forty thousand back of the napkin.
It goes back to, if you look at comment Bs again, beneath the grid, it compares the flat point two five and the flat point five five. And again, that's, that's just not making any sense to me.
Well, you have to also remember, this is not a straight fifty-five cents on each hour. It's a fifty-five cents on the range. It's a fifty-five cents on the range. So it's, it's not going, you can't take the twenty-fifty-eight and add the fifty-five cents. It's going to be a, it's across the range because this is the grids and the setup that WIS gave me. So we don't add it just to the hourly rate. It's going to add across the whole entire range of that fifty-five cents.
True, but it's not going to be radically different from the, um, the numbers that Kate was using in the back of the napkin.
If, if you're dealing with the same range and you're increasing by point-two-five, you'll have a certain number. And you go back to the same range and you increase by point-five-five, you should have about double-
I did this very quickly at the end of the day, so, I mean, I'm not guaranteeing anything, so.
You're doing great.
Yeah, I, I, I think we're gonna need to table this one and-
I think we do too.
But- That's fair. Counselor Iverson.
Until, so we all can understand it better.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just think anything we can do to keep, get people up toward the living wage in this comment section, the, the better we can do. And I, I know that, that it's, it's a little off and everything, but this is a really expensive place to live. And-
Mm-hmm.
Do we not? Have, have we not moved everybody into what would be considered a living wage or still below?
No.
I guess it, it depends on who you're talking about, but according to MIT's calc- calculator, for a, for a single parent with a child, the living wage is thirty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. For Monroe County.
Have we adopted, that's not a particular index that we've adopted.
No, that's not an index that we have adopted, but-
But what is this, I know the city has a living wage ordinance that they tracked over time.
That's my understanding as well, but I don't, I'm not sure. I don't have that at my fingertips. All right. The purpose of my comment is to say this is a worthy thing to look at.
I kind of want to, want to join that and say it would be good to figure that out concretely, what that, what that living wage would be versus what we do. I kind of appreciate the sentiment of what Counselor Wiltz is thinking with this. And it strikes me that it fits some of the comments that we heard from our folks who talked to us about those issues. And we all know, this is not getting cheaper around here. It's just not, particularly if you're starting.
So I just Googled this, and in twenty-twenty-three, it says, uh, for City of Bloomington, the living wage will be fifteen dollars and twenty-nine cents an hour. Minus ten percent of the annual sales of the employer pr- prorated on an hourly basis. Whatever that means.
I don't know what that means.
That's for the tipped employees.
Okay, for the tipped employees.
But that's, does, that seems remarkably low.
But that's, that was something that just came up in Living Wage Facts, City of Bloomington.
Yeah, and I'm looking at that same page. That, it, it seems remarkably low, so, okay.
Fifteen twenty-nine is very low.
Of which two twenty-nine can be in the form of health insurance. So, yeah, that, yeah, that, that's not, that's not a useful comparison.
Okay, we are way above that in any case.
Yes, we are.
Even with our, our fifteen percent COLA increase, now everyone is over twenty dollars an hour in Monroe County government, which is wonderful. It's a, it's a good move. Room for improvement.
There's always room for improvement. All right. I totally respect that we don't have the information to make any calls about that. And I think we have done a lot of good, and I would like to bring this back, although, um, it would have to be, you know, and it's something we do after we've adopted the budget at this point. Um, because I don't want Ms. Shell to pull her hair out completely.
But we can.
Um, you do have an opportunity at the public hearing.
Wow.
I'm just saying.
If you'd like to. I, I would like to say, as, from the last thing, last meeting, similarly to what I said back then, tonight, a lot of work, a lot of work done, a lot of great progress towards items that we've heard from folks as we continue moving on this budget. And I think that's a remarkable thing. And, um, maybe we get there on this too, and we talk about it, figure it out, get a number. But I think this is, we're doing good things, I think.
All right. It is nine forty-seven, so let's, can we try to? I know we still have another-
It's past our bedtimes. Okay. I will respectfully move on and, uh, promise you that you will see this again. And we are now going to be at item seventeen, which is the approval of summary minutes as presented. Uh, no?
You didn't want to do elective?
Oh, I skipped it.
No.
What did you prefer?
I don't necessarily want to either.
That was somewhat, somewhat Freudian.
I thought so.
We could always hold that to the conference.
All right. Here's the, here's the situation. Elected officials, um, were not included. The, what is the bottom line total impact of an eight-and-a-half percent for including elected officials, which I realize also increases chief deputies? What's the total number?
They get ninety percent of the elected officials.
Yeah. Man, I was ready to just skip that. Darn it.
I was too. Never been so happy to see minutes in my life.
Um, I want to remind everybody as, as we're pulling up information that we created this ladder based on the elected official max salary, which is the hundred percent level. And we put a lot of work into this, and it's a system that, um, was intended to take this discussion off the table. I don't necessarily mean that we shouldn't, you know, that it's perfect and we need to keep it. But I do just want to remind us that this is, you know, messing with one of these is, and not, you know, doing something differently for any of these positions starts to, you know, break down the system that we created. I just, you know, throwing that out there. Um, that said, we don't have to do exactly the same thing for elected officials as we do for the rest of, of county government. However, chief deputies are paid at ninety percent of the elected official. Therefore, they, um, they are impacted by what we do for the elected officials. And, um, I guess I'll stop there. Yes, Counselor Iverson?
So if, if I'm reading this correctly, and it's ten o'clock, so chances are I may not be.
It's not ten yet.
Uh, the, the fiscal impact of an eight-point-five percent raise across that elected officials grid is, is an additional fifty-two thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars? Uh, Michelle, can you scroll up? That number in blue. Am I reading that correctly? That's the fiscal impact, the additional-
Yes.
Fiscal impact of eight-point-five percent increase for elected officials.
That's what I'm seeing too.
Yes, that's the difference from going from twenty-twenty-three to an eight-point-five.
Okay.
Is a hundred and one.
Fifty-two, forty-six for, for elected officials. Fifty-two, four, forty-six. And then there would be another thirty thousand seven forty-six. So it's eighty-two, eighty-three thousand dollars.
And I, I wanted to repeat what I heard you say, that if I was being governed by, my Midwest values of humility, and I wanted to take the council out of this, that would screw everything up. I'm gonna go with what she said.
Yes, that's correct.
Well, it would, it would change the percentage. So if you go back to the top where it shows how the, the ladder was set up, it would change the percentage at which the council is compensated. And, um, that isn't a crime. That's totally doable, and we don't have a chief deputy, so we could do that to ourselves, and that wouldn't affect anyone else.
Yeah. I, I mean, the, the fiscal impact of that would be about a thousand dollars, it looks like.
It would be-
Twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four.
It's not a gigantic impact to the county budget.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that the way to think about not just at, I mean, if you want to do something besides just go with eight-and-a-half percent for everything, the way you should think about it is we are going to change the salary ordinance to change this ladder to reflect a different percentage. But I will remind you that we spent a lot of time coming up with that, not that that, yeah, just, I'm not going to vote for that. I'll say that.
No, and, and we had a department come to us during budget sessions wanting to do just that, and we said, no, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. So I would entertain a motion on what we should do, um, with elected officials and their chief deputies with respect to twenty-twenty-four. All right, wow. We have to do something.
We, we do have to do something. I, I'm having a little bit of, uh, I don't know what the word is, but we have made a lot of changes tonight. And it seems like the price tags are adding up and adding up and adding up. And I, I know we, I know we have to do something. But man, it just seems like, it just seems like a lot.
Yep, I agree. I agree. All right. Um-
I mean, you could always discuss it at the public hearing. I mean, it's ten o'clock at night. Nobody seems to really want to move here. Like, like Counselor Iverson said, there's been a lot of changes here that need to be digested.
Okay.
I was just saying, I'm uncomfortable always looking at this because it discusses counsel. Yeah. It's just, it, it, that and this other things on here that I, I'm not in agreement with some people getting an eight-point-five. That's just me personally. Um, uh, because I think if we are asking other departments to cut down, this would be another way for us to say, look, and this is what we did too. Um, I understand that this was a lot of emphasis that went into this, but I just wanted to say, I'm usually not comfortable giving myself that plus other people.
Um, I'm, I can, I can punt on this till the public, I suppose. That's going to put a little bit of stress on our office staff as, whoa. As that, um, you know, means they can't fill in those positions, um, in, including the chief deputies. But if we don't have a motion or sense of agreement, then we should wait because we're all tired. All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move to item seventeen and do our minutes.
Counsel, I move to approve the summary minutes of July eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, regular session and July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three work session as presented.
Second.
Does anyone want to make any changes, corrections? Anything about the minutes? All right. Could I have, oh, can we just approve these? All right. Everybody in favor of approving the minutes, say yee-haw.
Aye.
Say yee-haw.
I almost said say yea.
Say yea.
Any council comments?
At this point.
Thank you-
Have a good night.
-for your endurance. Uh, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.